Good evening, everyone. Calling this meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order, would the clerk please call the role?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, a couple of quick updates in terms of upcoming schedules and events. Next week, we will be meeting with the District 20 delegation, and that meeting will start at 6:00 PM. I'm looking at the city clerk. Is that correct?
6:30.
6:30, thank you very much. And that will be one of our final meetings of the calendar year. In terms of tonight's agenda, we will have a presentation on the annual comprehensive financial report and audit, followed by a presentation of the police employee's retirement plan and actuarial valuation, as well as the economic development update. And the voting session for tonight is a resolution setting forth the dates for the city council's winter recess. So with that, I just want to see whether or not we have any public comments for tonight.
... today 2.5 million idea, it will be familiar to long-term council members. The city has an equipment replacement reserve. For a capital item such as a police car, it's possible to estimate the item's life in years and its inflation-adjusted replacement cost. Dividing a replacement cost by the life in years gives an annual amount to save toward replacement. Adding those amounts for all the capital items the city owns gives the full funding level for the equipment replacement reserve. Recent budgets, recent budget proposals have not shown the full funding level. I hope the council will ask the city manager to show that level as part of this year's budget proposal. Since, on average, the city's equipment is about halfway through its life, the reserve ought to be about half the total replacement cost. And though underfunding in recent years has left it somewhat short, the $4.2 million balance as of 6/30/2022 is in the right neighborhood. This saving-for-replacement approach is best practice. The city could have more modest goals for the reserve to handle the short-term challenges of unexpected equipment losses and to avoid budget spikes in years with large outlays, such as when trash trucks are replaced. If you know me, you know I've obtained the data, made a spreadsheet, done the math, had someone else look it over, and I'm happy to talk with any of you about it. My key finding, if the city fully funds the reserve this year and simply adjusts for inflation in future years, having $1.7 million in the reserve is sufficient, having that now, is sufficient to project that the reserve does not go negative through the year 2080, as far ahead as I care to look. The reserve could be drawn down by as much as $2.5 million.
I should go. All right, bye.
A drawdown would be a one-time thing. It would not be in line with city policy to use it to meet ongoing expenses. Since the reserve represents savings, and saving is hard to do, the drawdown might best be converted to another form of saving. Transferring the drawdown to the city's pension funds would more than cover the actuarially recommended $150,000 increase in city contributions for the coming year, and it would substantially reduce contributions in future years. I hope the city council will consider fully funding the equipment replacement reserve this year, committing to adjusting for inflation in the future, drawing down the reserve based on that commitment and a more limited purpose, and using the drawdown to shore up the city's pension funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments?
We do have two people signed up on Zoom for public comments. We have Tom Gagliardo and Paul Hubner.
Perfect. And just so that folks know, our three-minute timer is not working tonight, and so everyone doesn't get to have a party. It's not a free-for-all, unfortunately, but I will be keeping track of the three minutes on my phone, so I will let you know when it is time. And so, city clerk, who is first?
Mr. Gagliardo is first.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Gagliardo, you have the floor.
The clock was eliminated in response to the email I sent to all of you about embracing and enlarging community involvement in your discussions. I guess I will have to be disappointed. I did send an email to each of you regarding expanding citizen participation in both the council meetings, in the newsletter, and on cable TV, and I again urge you to do that. I also sent an email regarding an innovative approach that's been embraced by a majority of the District of Columbia City Council regarding a way to address the affordable housing crisis, and I look forward to discussing this and other approaches to the housing crisis, which, of course, is not only in the district but Montgomery County and in the city of Tacoma Park itself. And I would also like to thank all of you who have responded to each of those emails, any number of you did, and believe me, it is truly appreciated. Finally, I want to express my concern about how the city spends its money. The previous speaker addressed that in some degree. I know Mr. Hubner, Paul Hubner, is going to speak next, and he has some specific comments which I entirely endorse after having discussed these things with him at some length. Again, congratulations. There's lots of work to be done. Good luck.
Thank you so much. And Paul Hubner, you now have the floor.
I don't see, I'm not on, oh, there you go. Good evening. Welcome to the hot seat, and congratulations to the council members who are certainly a hard-fought campaign. Many of you worked very, very hard. I'm Paul Hubner. I live in Ward III. Tonight's presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report raises more than a few questions. Specifically, how does this document help you, the new council, and us, the residents, understand the budget session, season ahead? What lessons can the city manager, the council, and residents learn from comparing the upcoming budget deliberations to last year's report? There are two very large decreases in city fund balances over the last two years. First, there's a decrease in the unassigned fund balances on page 37 of the document. It fell by $2,511,220. Then, there's a $3.3 million drop in the police pension fund balance on page 44. These were recently identified by the previous speaker, our dear friend Arthur Olson, and experienced council gadfly, who's well worth listening to. He said that deft hands will be required to replenish these big and growing holes in our funding balances, and I heartily agree. So next, do we begin the year with a budget deficit? During the recent campaign season, some asserted there is no fiscal or budget deficit, and they pointed to the increase in the net position of city funds. But since 73% of city total assets are comprised of city-owned land, buildings, and equipment, I'm not reassured. I don't think we want to sell the community center to pay our monthly bills. I personally found some $24.47 million in unassigned fund balance deficits in a review of the city balance sheets from 2019 through 2022 on the CAFERS. The unassigned fund balance is the money that is not required for restricted use, like the library bond or the police pension funds. The unassigned funds can be used to pay our normal monthly bills. Additionally, in March of this year, Susan Chung, Finance Director and the city manager, posted an update revealing a $2.7 million deficit over the period from 2018 through 2021. That does not include the $6.9 million deficit in this year's approved FY23 budget. You can find the supporting numbers for that on last year's budget on page 33 of the FY23 approved budget. So my question for the architects of the upcoming FY24 budget is, what are you being told is the current state of our fiscal health? What numbers will be used to construct the next budget? And what process will you follow to assemble the data and understand what the staff are telling you about our fiscal health in order to arrive at your decisions? Please keep in mind that 31% of households in our city are over 65, and many are on fixed incomes. How are you going to keep us, one course, to remain in our homes? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any additional comments from the public, either via Zoom or in person? Okay. Wonderful. All right. So we're going to move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments for tonight? Just as a reminder, please be sure to hit your button. Wonderful. All right. Councilmember Small, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Circe. I just wanted to take this opportunity to actually be here in person and speak on the record about a couple of things before we go too far into this session. They are the, I do think that it's important for people to know, recognize, or understand that as you constitute a new council, you are asking a new group of people to take on the institutional offices of being council members. And the presupposition that any one of those people would be prepared to be waylaid with the assertions of well-meaning and well-attention people can be a little bit heavy. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew that just because people didn't say anything about these issues with regard to the budget, that we are not interested in said issues. I think the other thing that I would like to say before I turn things over is I'd like to go through what I think is a list associated with this town from the Maryland Municipal League through the regular channels of municipal government. And this is a list of mayors in the town Tacoma Park. It goes from Benjamin Franklin Gilbert and Enoch Morris in the 1890s to Kate Stewart in 2015. Other than my general theories about names and people, I am certain that all of these people are white. That being said, we live and work in a town that has a racial justice in harmony initiative, and we supposedly do these impact statements, but I didn't hear anyone say anything about the fact that we have our first black mayor. And so I wanted to make sure that I said something about the fact that we have our first black mayor in a place that is historically known to be exceedingly liberal, and yet all of these wonderful liberal people hadn't said anything about this thing. And so I would end this part with my sincere congratulations to Mayor Circe, my understanding that this will not be allowed to be a glass cliff for her, and that as a member of a sweet spot in Generation X, where my parents were not black nationalists, but rather the inheritors of the civil rights legacy of the United States, I look at some of these things a little differently. And so I would like to conclude, rather than merely saying, "Woo tang for the children", by adding my two cents in this way, and that is by adding to the record a poem by Langston Hughes, and it's called "I Too Sing America." "I too sing America. I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes, but I laugh, eat well, and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody will dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen,' then. Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. I too sing America." That being said, I do know a fair bit about municipal government, and I'm looking quite forward to having conversation with all of the gadflies and anyone else who is interested in doing so, but I would like to recognize our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Small. Next up, Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. I don't have poetry tonight, but that is a great idea. Thank you for reading that. That was wonderful. I wanted to talk about two things, one very local, which is traffic, to say that on December 8th at 7:00, there will be a Zoom meeting regarding the Belford sidewalk in the Forest Park neighborhood to go over the first set of designs. So anybody who doesn't have the Zoom link, get ahold of me, and we'll get it to you. The second thing I wanted to talk about was climate, and to say a couple of things. The Regional Council of Governments has a committee on energy and environment, which I have been on. They met a couple of weeks ago, and we looked at a report that I sent all of you on the council earlier today, looked at a report on regional climate trends and how we're doing meeting the regional goals that we set out for ourselves as a region. The bottom line is the short-term goals that we thought we were going to miss, we've actually hit, even factoring in, factoring out, the impact of the pandemic. The longer-term goals, maybe not so much, not on track for that, but it was fairly encouraging, and it's a very clear slide presentation, if y'all want to just buzz through it. I also wanted to say that on the national level, I'm also a member of the National League of Cities Energy and Environment Committee, and I have just been selected as the chair of that for this coming year. So you'll be hearing a lot more from me about national issues as well as state and local climate issues, and I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar screen. It also includes a seat on the NLC board, which I'm not sure I realized, but it will be, it will be very useful, I think, for Tacoma to have that presence. So that's it for me. Thank you. Oh, one, sorry, one more thing. Those of you who quoted a bunch of numbers tonight, if you could email me with them, Arthur, David, this spreadsheet. Thank you. Yes, I would appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Olson, Mr. Hubner, and Mr. Gagliardo. Appreciated those thoughtful, insightful suggestions and observations. I take them to heart, and I'm sure many of all of us will. Thank you very much.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Hozak?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to also acknowledge the three public comments tonight throughout the campaign trail, as well as as we started our council service. I have heard a lot of people talk about how much they would really like to make sure that those who are coming and taking the time to speak with us really understand how much gratitude we have for them and for the committees that people serve on, and I want you to know that I'm sure everyone up here is dedicated to that, and we are a new council, and we are interested in what you have to say, and I do hope that you will share all those numbers that you said you would share with Councilmember Dibala, with all of us who are interested, and we would welcome dialogue, I'm sure, one-on-one, as appropriate. Thank you.
Great. Any additional comments? Okay. Awesome. All right. So I'm going to run through my comments. So again, to echo my colleagues, thank you very much to Paul Hubner, Mr. Gagliardo, as well as author David Olson for your comments tonight. Read the emails, look forward to receiving additional information. One of the things that we did stress with the prior council, and I'm sure our city manager would agree, is, you know, the helpful information regarding the budget is always welcomed, so I'm going to encourage folks to provide that information, and we appreciate your comments tonight. Had an opportunity to attend before this meeting, the Montgomery Community Media Honors, where they were actually honoring the former Tacoma Park Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Vernon Ricks. Mr. Ricks was the first black mayor Pro Tem. He was, he was not elected but appointed, and so it was really wonderful to have an opportunity to chat with him and to meet his family at the event tonight. And so, another quick update, on Tuesday, before Thanksgiving, there was a wonderful opportunity where our co-op collaborated with the Crossroads Food Network, and they received a grant from the USDA designed to allow for shoppers at the co-op to, who use SNAP benefits to get an essence of 50% discount, which is wonderful. It was a massive grant, and the fact that we had the undersecretary of USDA come out to give a quick press conference about that wonderful opportunity is wonderful. It's just so amazing and a great opportunity to bring in healthy foods to people that are income and food restricted. So congratulations to the co-op and the Crossroads Food Network on that grant. Also, this weekend, had a chance to frequent some of our small businesses in the city. It was Small Business Saturday. I spent a lot of money. I mean, I ate well. I ate very well, and had a chance to frequent some of the businesses in the city. I definitely want to encourage folks to check out Market at the Bank. Like, that is so fun, so cool, great pop-up opportunity to meet some small local vendors, but to also just hang out with neighbors a little bit. And I didn't realize until this weekend how much I miss just going around to markets and things, so that is something definitely to check out. Also, this Saturday, CCI Health Services will be celebrating their 50-year anniversary. So I will have an opportunity to go to that event, and that is on Saturday. And also, there's a lot of stuff happening this weekend. On Sunday is Pajama Rama, so want to encourage people to put on their pajamas and go to Old Town and celebrate the businesses there, and buy some great stuff, and support our local businesses. And I believe those are all of the comments that I have. Thanks so much. And if there are no additional comments from council, we're going to move on to the city manager comments. City Manager Fox, take it away.
No comments this evening, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. Okay. So this is moving fast. I'm not complaining. All right. So next, we have the adoption of minutes.
Mayor Circe, I would say that I did distribute them very late, and so it might suggest that you delay adoption until your January meeting.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. So, but we did receive those minutes, right? Okay.
Yep.
All right. So next is our presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report and audit.
Madam Mayor, we're going to have Director Chung introduce the auditor.
Good evening, Councilmember Mayor. I am very pleased this year we have a new audit firm doing our city's audit, and the firm is called Barbara King Thornton &amp; Company. I am very pleased that we have the partner of the firm doing a presentation to us. It's involving the fiscal year 22 financial reporting. And also, it is great news to know that our audit is unmodified. That means we have a clean audit. So Mr. Timothy Sawyer is the partner, and he is going to do the presentation for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening. My pleasure to be with you here tonight. I'm going to give you a brief kind of high-level overview, kind of give you a flavor of what an audit entails, and then go over some of the financial results as well. If you could advance to the next slide, please. There we go. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the audit results, and in that, I'm going to go over briefly the audit timeline, our audit approach, areas of emphasis during the audit, and of course, the results, quickly on other matters, and then some financial results comparing this year to last year's numbers. For the audit timeline, we did what's called a hybrid approach. Obviously, coming out of COVID, we had to kind of shift and do work remotely. I mean, we, as an audit firm, we've been doing work remotely. It was just at clients' offices as opposed to home offices. So now, we find that most audits are done in a hybrid approach, where we actually do come on-site, do some testing here, just because it's easier to test some of the records, but then we do a lot of our audit work remotely as well, with Susan and her team putting information up into our secure portal that we request. Our field work began on August 29th, and it was completed on October 14th. That's where we do all the testing of the account balances and That's where we do all the testing of the account balances and looking at your internal controls, seeing how everything is evaluating, and that, that work really drives the basis for our audit opinions. We issued a draft audit report in October, which was reviewed and eventually approved by the city management. Your uniform financial report was submitted on November 4th, and then the audit report itself, which was dated on November 16th, was also issued. When we look at the, oops, wrong way. With the audit approach, we, we target areas of what we consider greater audit risk after we do an evaluation. And it's really a four-part approach to that, where we take time to inquiry and document your controls and procedures for processing transactions. We then test the design and implementation of those controls. We perform an analytical review on activities and different account balances, and then we also do testing of your key activities in detail, looking at various audit documentation. As far as areas that we emphasize during the audit, there are primary three transaction cycles that we look at, which are your cash receipts, dealing with your revenue, cash disbursements, dealing with your expenditures, and then also on payroll. And in addition to that, as we go through different areas, we will also select other random transactions to take a look at. But those are the three main areas that we look at. And when we do that with revenue, obviously, one of the worries as far as an audit perspective would go would be your revenue recognition and making sure that your revenue is fairly stated. We do that through third-party confirmation, review of other supporting documentation, for example, grants, grants agreements. We'll do third-party confirmation of your cash accounts and debt balances. We'll take a focus on your capital outlay expenditures, or anything related to, you know, equipment additions or buildings. We'll also obviously do a focus on your payroll, obviously, being payroll and benefits being the number-one expenditure for any organization or government entity. It's not.
Move the screen. You can't move the screen.
The button is.
Yeah.
This is a test we put everyone through when they're new.
You could also pretend that we actually have the numbers, and we could skip ahead to that if you want.
Okay, I can, I can continue. We can, we can kind of catch up. The next slide was just the, it's a slide on other matters, where I just wanted to point out, you know, this was, this was our first-year audit, as Susan had mentioned. So I did want to take the time to mention that management was very helpful and forthcoming during our audit process. We were very pleased with the response as far as when we asked for information, how quickly that we got it. Let you know, too, that there were no waived audit adjustments, which would be audit adjustments that we found that management decided not to post, but everything that we found was posted, and there were not many. And just to mention, too, that we're also available year-round for any questions you may have related to financial information and all. And I know Susan's actually already reached out a couple of times with some questions, so I'm glad to, glad to always help in that aspect. My next, I had a bunch of charts for you, so I can kind of just start running through those, comparing the 2022 results to 2021. Your cash and cash equivalents for the year went from about $14.8 million up to $24.4 million. Biggest reason for that increase was, of course, you received $7 million in ARPA funds that added to your cash balance, and those will obviously be spent for their intended purposes going forward. Your investments went from 3.8 down to 3.1. Restricted cash was at 8 million last year, it was down to 6.5. And then overall, your capital assets went from 42.2 million up to 42.3 million. If you're looking at the actual financial statements, all these can be found on the Statement of Net Position on page 35. Sticking with page 35, on the flip side, taking a look at your, some of your bigger liabilities. Deferred revenue went from $285,000 up to $7.6 million. The big increase there, again, is those ARPA funds. So as the money starts to be spent for its related purposes, you'll recognize that as revenue to offset the expenses, so it's a, basically, it's a wash. But that was the big increase there for your unearned revenues. Next, you had, your bonds and notes payable went from 8.8 million down to 8.2, so that's just your regular schedule on your payments. Next, your net pension liability went from 10.8 million up to 13 million. Now, that's based a lot on your valuations of the pension plans and the projected benefits that are required there. And then overall, your net position went from 44 million up to 46.6 million, so you had a nice $2.6 million increase in your overall net position of the town, or city, excuse me. All right, here we go. All right, so then to your revenues. So your charges for services, these revenues come from the Statement of Activities, which is page 36 in the report. So you can see your charges for services, pretty much about the same, 2.1, 2.7 million. Your operating grants and contributions, 6.2 million last year, they were 7.2 this year. Your capital grants and contributions, $188,000 last year to $185,000. Your taxes, 18.4 million to 19.4 million. Your other revenue was 807,000 last year. This year, it was 2.2, 2.3 million. The big increase in that was, the driver was also part of the ARPA funding. That was your revenue loss calculation and money that you received for, for that, so that's the, the big increase there. So overall, your total revenues went from 27.8 million to 31.7 million in '22. On the other side, if you look at your expenditures, we're, we're not having any luck with technology tonight.
Join the club.
So I'm stuck again on revenue, so we'll leave that up, and I'll talk about the expenses. On the expense side, your general government category was about the same at 5.8. Public safety was at, went from 8.2 up to 9.1 million. On public work, 6.6 up to 7.6 million. Here, there we go. Kind of, kind of back a little bit there, so you're, there you go. That's, that's the one. Wrecking culture was at 3.2 last year, it's up to 4.1. And then, lastly, was your interest on your long-term debt, which went from 298,000 down to 286,000. So overall, your total expenses for the year went from 26 million up to $29.1 million. The next slide I had was related to your overall fund balance. So in the general fund, your fund balance went from 19.4 up to 20.3 million. In your special, the Speed Camera Fund, one of the special revenue funds, it was at 567,000 in '21, it went up to 667,000. Your special revenue fund itself was 3.6, it's now 3.7. Because of the overall funding and the magnitude of the ARPA fund, it is, was required to be set up as its own fund, so there's a new fund in the statements this year. Because, most of that I mentioned before, the cash received and the money being unearned until it's actually spent, the fund balance in there is $272, which was basically the interest that was earned on the account while you had it. Then your, lastly, was your, your non-major funds combined, so it was 600,000 last year. That fund balance went up to 726,000. So overall, your fund balance rose from 24.2 to 25.5 million dollars. And then lastly, just kind of dealing with some of the general fund, fund balance numbers, breaking down that overall 20.3 million. You had a little bit in nonspendable, which is related basically to prepaid items and inventory. Restricted fund balance went down a little bit from 6.6 million to 6.4 million. Your committed went from 5.7 up to 9.3, and your unassigned went from 7.1 down to 4.6. So, but still, overall, in the general fund, the fund balance went from 19.4 up to 20.3 million, and just kind of staying in tune with your policies. In 2022, your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the revenues was 17% this year. It was 28% last year. Really driving that was the movement of the unassigned over into the committed categories of the fund balance, because that went from 5.7 up to 9.3. So it's just really kind of a shifting overall, but your fund balance did go up from the year before overall. So that's kind of the high-level overview. If anybody on council or the mayor has a question related to the financial statements for their presentation, I'd be glad to address them.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Lots of lights are going up. Councilmember Small.
Oh, I, I would defer to Councilman Siemens, honestly. He's been here.
Thank you, sir. If that's okay with you.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm just wondering if there were any findings this year that, that, issues that we need to address going forward?
Nothing that we saw when we did our internal control work. We found your controls were operating effectively and as they were designed, so we didn't have any, any, any findings that had to be reported.
And any concerns that you would have that the council should be addressing in the coming year?
Nothing from our initial audit, obviously, with the, the ARPA funds. As I'm sure Susan knows, it's obviously more things to, just to jump through the hoops with the federal money and making sure that you do that. But as part of that, with that, we do a single audit based on your federal expenditures, so we take a look at all the different compliance requirements and all to that. So really, the only thing is just so, because some of that money is new, it's newer program, so just to kind of be aware.
All right. I thank you, and I turn it back over to Mr. Small.
Thank you, Councilman Siemens. I have a couple of questions, and not to be too melodramatic here, but at a base level, does the town, or does the city of Tacoma Park take in, in revenue, more or less money than it spends?
So if you wanted to see that answer in the financial statements, I'll point you out to the, the page. So if you were to go to page 39 in the statements, this is, it's broken down by fund and in total. So for 2022, you had 31.3, 31.4 million in total revenues across all funds, and you spent 30 million point one. So to answer your question, this year, you took in more money than you actually spent.
So would you then say that if that is the case, that this budget is operating on a surplus? Or would you say that it is not operating on a surplus?
For 2022, you operated on a surplus.
And so that money that has been a part of the surplus is therefore dedicated to debt service, or is it dedicated to an expansion of services?
Well, that depends on, it's hard to say exactly where that, that surplus went dollar for dollar, but based on your fund balance, like I mentioned, fund balance went up, and you do have various items that it's set aside for. So on page 37, you can see where it's, we have some nonspendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The unassigned is basically the bucket that's available for any purpose. All the other items have either been restricted by outside source or committed by the council, or if it was assigned, where management has the ability to, you know, kind of market for certain resources that you will then eventually make the final determination on paying for. But the unassigned is what's the portion that's available for basically any use. So it kind of depends where it goes in those buckets when you make those final, final decisions as far as where the fund balance gets kind of divvied out to at the end of the year.
And to follow up on, on something that, that Councilman Siemens says, and, and not go too far into the weeds with you on these things, when discussing the controls and generally accepted accounting principles associated with this budget, it, there were no findings. Notwithstanding that, is it your assertion that the material position of the town or city with regard to its financials is positive or, or negative?
I would say it's positive. Like I said before, with the, you've increased your fund balance and your net position. Like I said, no material weaknesses or deficiencies noted in your internal controls, which, of course, based on all our audit work, as Susan mentioned, we had the, the unmodified or clean audit opinions, meaning that your financial statements do present fairly your financial position.
Reggie.
Okay. Any other question? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. And so is there, is there a way to summarize the changes between our position at the end of last year and our, I guess, position is a technical word, our, our finances at the end of last year and our finances at the end of this year? Because what I, what I think I'm hearing is that this is good news.
Yes.
Okay. So, just making sure. May have not my strong point. So can, can you, can you once again summarize some of the change, factors that contribute to that improved finances?
You mean as far as, like, the increase in your fund balance and your net position?
Yeah, that kind of thing, yeah. Look, you just, you just said that it's overall positive, that the fund balance has, has, has increased.
Right.
That we are not, in this past fiscal year that we just finished, is not, is a surplus year, not a deficit year. Couple of the revenue categories went up. What am I missing? Is that pretty much the summary?
Pretty much got the summary right.
All right. Good.
If, if I can, I would just add with this.
Yes, please.
Though, yes, it is, it is a good audit, and staff in council has done a great job with this, bringing this audit forth. But I will say, and the auditor just stated previous, is if it had not been for ARPA, this would be a deficit much higher than what you're seeing here. So it'd be very, it's, it's good news, but I also just wanted to be very clear, because when we get into fiscal year '24 next year, and we start talking about building that budget, we, we took some, some actions with, with staff in, with general funding using ARPA to be able to help get us to this position. And staff, when we did the $3 million reduction exercise, if you, for those who was on council, remember that exercise. So there's, there's things that we did to get us to this position that we'll have more conversations at the beginning of next year of what we need to do to try to continue to take the light out the apple as we move forward, because it's, this is good, this is, this is great news, and we did a great job getting it to this point, but we're going to have to stay vigilant as we move forward. to stay vigilant as we move forward.
That, that's where I was going. Thank you for the, you and the staff and the auditors for, for all the work.
And just to, just to reinforce what, what Jamal had said there, you had a $1.2 million basically surplus this year. Your revenue loss calculation on our ARPA funds was 1.2 million.
Okay.
So basically, without that, you would have been breakeven.
Okay. Thank you. Thank, yeah, and thank you for the financial work.
I think there's. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I'm reading through a lot of pages here. I'm not sure where I found it, but I believe that there were some of the expenses, significant amount of the expenses were less because of perhaps some vacancies not filled, some positions not filled, other, other ways that the, that our expenses were reduced that may not be able to be replicated again, and maybe this is what the manager is suggesting, that, and I presume that that's part of that had to do with, with personnel that were either not replaced, and also programs that were not activated because of COVID. Is that accurate?
Councilmember, yes, that's, that's part of, when we, when we went through the budget development for this year's budget, even in fiscal year 22, we made certain decisions, and we did a lot of freezing, and so there was a lot of decisions that we, we froze so we could receive those savings to help us get to the position that where we are. And that's some of the, the strategies that we'll be looking at as well moving forward. And though you were now in council, now you're in council, we, when we did the budget development process, I had requested staff give 9% across departments, and so that's where we started at. And where we ended up at is the savings from vacancy savings, and then also $3 million reduction across. But it's holding off, pushing off, not doing certain projects. So it's, it's a whole litany of strategies that went into play with council's help to get us to this point.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was negligent in not thanking Ms. Chung for her leadership in the finance in the city and the great job that she continues to do, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Councilmember Small?
Yes, I, I did want to echo that, that this seems to be very well done and, and consistent with the other financial materials. And so I don't want to give anyone the impression that I do not feel that way, because I do think that. The one question that I did have with regard to the way that this budget is constructed and/or with the way the funds are aligned, is that there isn't necessarily any line items or spending to align in any of the budgetary processes that I have seen here. And so I'm curious about what your opinion is about the construction of a budget in this manner versus the construction of a budget that would allow for potentially citizens to have a more reasoned understanding of where the money that is being accumulated is being spent.
Councilmember Small, I, I'll take that ten. To answer your question, with the engagement piece is going to be something that we continue to work at. And with the last council, one of the things that we talked about is, which will be rolling out at the top of the new year, is our Balancing Act module. That's going to engage the council, the community and council, and those who are interested in our budget a little bit more, and have that educational piece tied to it. And we're going through our, we just started today, conversations with our financial forecast consultant. And so when that process works its way out, that's going to be overlaid into the next process, and we'll have a little more engagement with the community.
Reggie.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. I would like to thank you both for, for the presentation. I, and I am new to council, so I have so many questions, but I think from a big picture, and, and I'm not sure you're in a position with this particular audit to answer the question right now, maybe I'm just going to lay the question out for further conversation later, is I think it would be incredibly helpful to understand how our current budget compares to where we were fiscally, or how our, how our current fiscal situation is as compared to pre-pandemic? What was lost during the pandemic by the city in terms of revenue? And what was gained via the ARPA funding that we got, which was a very large amount of funding? And therefore, what does that tell us about our future fiscal health? I, I don't know, I mean, this is a big, these are big questions, but I feel that as a citizen and as a representative, you know, coming into this fresh, I think those are kind of some of the big picture questions that I'm not able to wrap my head around looking at the report. And, and it beckons for me, just those bigger questions of how we can wrap our heads around that as a community and, and speak to those interests within the city, because we have a lot of people who are very concerned about our physical, fiscal health, and I'm not able to answer those questions at present. Thank you.
Councilmember, if, if I can, I would say a good starting point for any member of council, and really anyone in the community, is if you go back to that presentation that Director Chung and I did with the fiscal health earlier this year, I believe it was May? And I believe we have it posted, but I'll ask Director Chung, if you can find it, just send that to council. That's a good starting point. And so when you talk about, and in that presentation, we did the last 10 or 12 years, I believe, when we laid it out, fund balance and everything, that's a good starting point. And I, and I believe the council that was here last, last term will be able to provide some feedback on their takeaway on that. I think what we've gained with ARPA, I think that's going to be a continual conversation that we're going to, we're going to have moving forward. But I, I also say that it's going to be laid, it will be an overlay with the financial forecast, because that's going to be critical in, in that discussion.
May I ask, because I don't remember, how many years out the financial forecast project is going to go?
10 years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, just to sort of follow up on Councilmember Small's point about the community engagement and transparency, I think also is implied in that. I guess, I guess one of the things that would help me and perhaps other citizens is to have a, to know the full cost of many of our projects. I, I guess it may go by the name of performance-based budgeting, time on task. The budgets which show, can show how much time was spent by key personnel will give a, I think would give a truer cost of any individual project that we take on, whatever it may be. And I wonder if that's being considered? My, my basic question is how we can, you know, use a CFR and how, what changes that may be, we may want to make in the future budget to move us forward. I know that once the new year begins, we will be looking closely at that budget, and I wonder how we might do it differently. Thank you.
And, and I would, I would say, if, to, to do something different, and it is a conversation that the will of council we can have during budget, because part of that is going to be staff capacity and increasing that capacity, which we do not have currently, to do anything different than whether you could look at performance-based, you could do zero-based, there's, there's different budgeting module that, out there that you can do. And we can have that, that conversation if, if it's the will of council, and the mayor had that conversation. It, it would, it would take some, a lot to do, and we would have to, I think part of it is, is understanding this council's priority and where you want to focus that attention, and that would help us on, on staff meet, meet that goal.
Great. All right. Let's go right ahead.
Just, just follow up, just briefly, I think that my limited understanding of, of this CFR and, and our budget process, and the presentation, the suggestions by a couple of our, our residents, and their concerns about our budgeting process, leads me to believe that we will need, need to be making some hard decisions in terms of priorities. And to, to make those hard decisions, personally, I think I need to know what the full cost of some of those projects are, and some, some variation on, on time on task, I would suggest we look at, but I understand it's a, it's a council decision. But I do believe that we're going to be forced to make some hard decisions, and we need as much information as we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. So I have a ton of questions, and I'm going to try to keep it short. So one of the things that came to mind in looking at the fact that we have an unrestricted surplus this year versus a deficit last year was the, and I think this kind of relates back to Councilmember Hanzak's question around the impact of the pandemic on various revenue streams. So things like speed camera revenues, rec program revenues, and then, and I know this may be a question, this might be a question for staff. I know that in 2021, we were coming, kind of coming out of the pandemic and, for the most part, going live and with a lot of our programming again. Is the forecasting going to, or the next budget cycle going to assume that we're going to be full and open, and, and some of our revenue estimates might tweak from that 2021 estimate to something that's more aligned to pre-pandemic levels? Because, you know, I think that for some of our revenue streams that are not necessarily tied to ARPA, because we were coming out of the pandemic, I'm expecting them to ultimately get back to some degree to pre-pandemic levels. So has there been discussions about potential impact of, of those kinds of revenue streams? Because it looks like a lot of our funds went up across the board, and some of those revenues went up across the board?
And as it relates to the financial forecast consultant, we just had the first initial meeting today. But I would, what I can say is, they're going to, they're going to take, take a look at the market factors and what that looks like, and they'll, they're going to do some modeling, and that'd be something that we'll be bringing back to council in, in a few months, so you can actually see that modeling in, in public.
Yeah. Because it would also be helpful to understand two impacts of things like, you know, our tax duplication, additional bump up, and then what that means over time, right? Because it's, there's a combination of monies that are made available to us. So we have ARPA, which is the one and done, but we also got that bump up with tax duplication that will fizzle over time. Then we're also talking about revenue streams that low during the pandemic, but may start to tick up again, because they're based on people doing stuff, like driving, speeding, or, or participating in our rec programs. So it, it would be helpful, because I think that we're, again, in this weird fiscal year space, where there's just still some uncertainty in terms of the revenues and kind of how they may look going forward. So that is something that would be useful. And I don't know whether or not you maybe have audited other jurisdictions that, you know, during this kind of coming out of the pandemic, starting to see certain revenue streams that low because of the pandemic, kind of come out of, of that phase, and you start to see a little bit more increase in revenues from that respect.
I think overall, you do see that, just because, you know, it's getting back to more normal or more pre-pandemic stages, you know. Will it totally recover? I, I can't pull out the crystal ball and tell you it will, but, you know, you should, where you had the very lull during the pandemic, you should see some of those things start coming back as people do get back out and, you know, start doing different things and stuff, you know, especially like your rec programs where you went, you know, whatever it was, it'll start to come back.
Thank you.
I want to add to the partner's answer is, in our revenue, we can move to fiscal year 21, the increases in category are mainly in hotel tax, amusement tax, and income tax. The property tax area has some increase because of the assessment value, and we have been remaining the, the tax rate flat for the last, last few years. So the increase of the property tax is mainly because of the assessed value. It's not the tax rate. So these few categories in the, in, in the tax area are the increases from 21 to 22. And also in the services and fees, especially in the recreation area, a lot of, because of the cities being open since June, a lot of recreation activities, we, we have collective fees from there. So that's one of the increases in the source of revenue, is the recreation fees.
Thank you.
Sure. Another thing that I noticed, so investment earnings went down, it's not that much money, but it, it did make me wonder about the impact of current state of the world in terms of like inflation, recession, all of those things, and the potential impacts that it may have on certain aspects of our budget. Are there any things that we need to keep in mind as we're thinking through or preparing for, for out years of our, of our budgets, particularly if we're expecting riding a certain kind of fiscal wave in terms of things that we don't have the ability to control?
Right. Well, I mean, I, I think you're thinking about all the right factors, inflation being the biggest one. I mean, it's about 7%, so, you know, cost of things are going to go up, you know, so, and will you be able to generate enough revenues to meet that increase in the cost? Or do you have to cut other areas? So that'll, that'll be the challenge during the budget process.
And then, go ahead.
Mayor, so, I want to add to the, the answer that Mr. Sawyer provided about the investment decrease. The investment income decrease is mainly because of the, our investment portfolio, it was not performing in fiscal year 22. And besides, our main source of investment income is from the deposit account in the Truist Bank. And in fiscal year 22, I'm sorry, fiscal year 20 through fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year 22, our interest rate was really low, deposit rate was really low. But you've, you've noticed that in the past few months, the Federal Reserve Bank has been increasing the interest rate. So I was challenging the Truist City, the Truist Bank account manager, that I said, we are maintaining an interest rate of 0.02, and now the Federal Reserve Bank has been increasing rates. So they actually changed our interest rate, starting from, I believe from October, and interest income has tremendously increased, now November, has changed to nearly 20,000 per month. So that was a massive increase. And if the rate going forward is going to maintain, will be steadily increased.
Great. Thank, thank you for doing that. That's great news. Okay. And I think I have one more question in terms of our reserve balances, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood the, the point that was raised in terms of ensuring that our reserve fund balances are in line with the city of Tacoma Park's policies. Because I think sometimes it gets a little confusing in terms of, you know, is it appropriate or not appropriate to draw from our reserve, like the substantial transfer of committed dollars from our reserve? dollars from our reserve? Can you talk a little bit, and this may be a question for Suzie, Susan Chell or what was the manager, those commitments of the reserve, were those activities ARPA related and they're kind of doing a dollar shuffle? Or is that something where projects that we've earmarked that had the reserves to complete? And I'm referring to that one slide where we saw the committed number of, the committed amount of reserves and we saw those went down. Yeah.
Well, so you're committed, actually, the committed went up from 5.7 last year to 9.3.
Right.
So within, within that 9.3, you have a side fund for, 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 the housing fund reserve, apart for the subsequent year, but, items, you know, it was a decision, obviously, to, for the.
Make sure I'm clear on what that, what those committed items were. I know that we, we block out, so I voted for, we've committed, I did do, there are a number of activities that were, trying to think of how, because this relates to the, to the future budget, right? So this is kind of like the look back, all of the stuff that we, we spent money on, we committed, now looking forward. And as we're talking through priorities, if our priority is, hey, we've done a lot, we got all this ARPA stuff, staff capacity is limited, how do we increase our, though, we're, that's uncommitted?
Yeah.
As we get ready to talk through the budget, you know, recommendations you all may have in terms of whether or not we need to use reserves, given the amount, even though we were within that, and so, how do we want to make sure that we can kind of add to the ?
In fiscal year 23 adopted budget, we have a budget deficit. Okay? So, after the discussion, and with the recommendation of, we took in 7% of the general fund expenditure, fund reserve, unassigned reserve. The reason, to a committed reserve and because of, in fiscal year 23. And that committed amount is, can be released. Can be released for any reason that the council feel appropriate for any type of projects or when our future budget has become in violation. Okay. So, so, to the future and it adjusted, the bond funds that we cannot use. So it's something similar to the equipment replacement, facility, it still can be appropriated in the future. And especially when we can maintain a balanced budget, those funds can be released to the unassigned reserve.
Okay. And so I think just for everybody's education, because we use deficit a lot around here and it feels very alarmist, right? So when we're talking about the budget deficit, but what we're looking at right now with the ACFA, right? I'm looking at city manager because I'm trying to make sure I'm using the right terms. With the ACFA are the actuals, right? The actual revenues that we brought in and the actual expenditures that happened. And right now, in 2022, we're not showing a deficit, right? But when we start planning for our 2023, we to some degree plan to do more work than we anticipated being able to fund, right? And so there was a lot going on and that's understandable. But I do want to make sure that people understand that just because necessarily we may plan a budget deficit, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's what actually happens when called the metals, as the manager explained, with, so I think what we're, understanding how this works, it's easy for me to, so I'm very grateful about that. But when we start talking about the next budget, the question is whether or not there are certain activities that we really want to make sure that we're able to push and anticipating revenues, what that, so I just want to make sure that folks kind of understand this process when we're talking about this, budget, and then, thanks. Yep. Yes. Councilmember?
Just a question, kind of related to that is, I was wondering about the timing of the revenue, the next, I guess, six-month or quarterly revenue and expenditure report that would help us do that next budget. What's the timing for the release of that?
Well, we'll have some more, some figures and numbers after the beginning of the year. And we'll be working on finance to make sure we provide that to you all, unless Director Chung has.
Our quarterly report for the year end of fiscal year 20, 23, December 2022 is available now and is under review and presented to the council for, okay? We are working on the third quarterly report will be due after March, so we have not had a chance to work on that yet. But the year end of fiscal of the December 2022 is available now and is under review by, by myself and the city manager and it can be presented to the council soon.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Because we have a lot more presentations ahead. All right. Wonderful. So moving on to the next item, presentation of.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much for your, for coming tonight. Presentation of police employees' retirement plan actuarial valuation. Wonderful.
Madam Mayor, tonight we have Tom Vicente, who's going to present the actuarial value for the police pension. And he comes from Bolton. Tom, I'll let you take it away from here, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't know, is this, is this loaded on to the presentation slides, the presentation?
Mr. Vicente.
There it is. Okay. So this is a presentation of the results of our 2024 or 2022 actuarial valuation. If we move ahead, we'll move ahead a little bit quickly in the interest of time, we go to slide number four, labeled background. We just want to remind the group of what the pension plan is and its origins. So this, this plan originally started in 2001. You originally were in the state of Maryland plan but decided you wanted more control over the level of benefits and the management of it and so formed your own plan. One of the key things that's involved in funding the plan are different assumptions and one of the key assumptions is about what kind of investment return we're going to have in the future in this system that's used for budgeting purposes. Right now, we use an assumption of seven and a quarter percent as the long-term rate of return. So it's not the return this year or next year, but it's the long-term return over many years. We established that rate of return as the assumption back in 2017. We'll see as we go through the report that seven and a quarter is still well within the realm of what's considered reasonable, though we have seen what others are using decrease over time, as where at one point Tacoma Park was considered conservative at seven and a quarter. Now your mainstream may be a little bit above mainstream. Going to the next slide, just as a reminder that this plan provides a benefit, essentially 50% of pay to the officers after they retire after 25 years of service. They can retire earlier, but the benefits reduced if they retire earlier. There is a cost of living adjustment post-retirement for retired officers. The limits, the cost of living adjustment is limited to 3% over the course of their retirement. So in a given year, it could be higher or lower than 3%, but in aggregate, it won't be higher than a compounded 3%. This particular year, the CPI increase was 7%. So some officers received an increase much higher than 3% depending on what, how long they've been retired and what the past increases were. There's disability benefits. The officers do contribute themselves to the plan. They contribute 7% out of their pay. And the most recent plan change was the introduction of what's, introduction of what's called a drop feature. Drop stands for deferred retirement option program into the plan, which essentially allows officers to move to a position where their pension is frozen, but it accumulates while they're working. And when they do retire at the end of the drop period, they can take a lump sum of those accumulated payments that would have been made had they retired during that period. So it's a new piece. There's only, I think, one officer who's in the drop program at this point. There's interest from others, but so far it's just been one officer. So with that as background, why don't we get into some of the valuation results? If we go ahead to slide seven, you can see some of the snapshots. So what we do when we do an actuarial evaluation is we take a snapshot of the plan participants at a given day. In this case, it's July 1st, which is the first day of your fiscal year, the first day of the plan year. And we take that snapshot, we get all the census information of that day for the active officers who will, if they keep working, will eventually retire from the plan and get a pension, as well as those who are already retired. We put a lot of assumptions together to model out what the long-term cash flows of the plan are going to be, how much we're going to pay out in benefits every year over the next 60, 70 years. And then we bring those numbers back into today's dollars by taking the present value of all those future benefit payments. So we use a lot of assumptions, things like, you know, are people going to stay? Are they going to turn over? Are they going to leave before they reach retirement age? What's the likelihood that's going to happen? When are they going to retire? What age? What's the likelihood at one age versus the other? And of course, how long are they going to live? So we pulled all that in and that's how we do our calculations. That's the liability side. Then we match it up against the assets, so the invested assets in the trust fund for the pension. And using those two factors, there's a policy that determines what the contribution's going to be. So this year, and this is for fiscal 2024, so we always do the work a year in advance so you have time to put into your budgets. The contribution as a percentage of payroll is going to be 47% of covered payroll. That's the payroll for the covered officers at that snapshot date. And that equals just under $1.5 million, $1,0483. So that is an increase over the prior year and the increase was driven largely by probably no surprise to most folks, the fact that the investment returns for the period ending June 30, 2022, were not particularly strong. We mentioned our seven and a quarter percent assumption, again, that's long-term, but the return this particular year was a minus 14 and a half percent return. So that return wasn't really that much different than many other pension plans, but that doesn't make it necessarily any less expensive to, to make up that difference, which is why the contribution went higher. If you, for those who were here last year, you remember this conversation was much more cheerful. We just come off a 14 or 15% positive return versus a 14% negative return. So last year, we actually saw contributions going down because of this. So right now, we're back, we're a little bit higher than we were for the fiscal 2022 contribution, but a good deal higher than we were for the 2023 fiscal contribution. Other contributing factors for the plan cost were the cost of living adjustment. The inflation was mentioned a few minutes ago. So inflation does contribute, as you mentioned, the inflation contributes to the post-retirement cost of living adjustment for the officers. So that was a little bit of a catch-up. Now, remember, we had had several years where inflation was much lower than 3%. It was one or one, one or one and a half percent per year for several years. In those years, we actually did better than, we did better than, than our assumption. We also have a lower headcount in total payroll. So the snapshot is as of July 1st. At July 1st, the headcount for the police group was lower than it had been historically. And the payroll was also down because the number of officers was smaller. So that does play into the calculations. We look at that contribution rate as a percent of covered payroll. Keep in mind that the payroll, if, if the July 1, 2022 snapshot date was a date where there just happened to be a decrease in officers and the hiring hadn't caught up yet, then the payroll will be a little bit lower, which will make that percentage look a little bit higher. That's the, that's the really high level results of the valuation. The next slide gives you a lot more numbers. I know there are some folks here who are very numbers-driven, so we want to make sure we include those. There's a lot of numbers on this page. I'm not going to try to go through these all at once. I think the big thing to look at, the very top of the page, you'll see the number of participants, number of active participants, participants not in drop went from 42 down to 38. It's only four people, but with 42 to start with, that's a 10% drop. You do see that the total participants went from 83 to 84. So while we have fewer actives, overall, we have one more participant in the plan. So we did have folks moving to retirement and being replaced. The payroll's just under that line, the active payroll went from 3.368 million to 3,137. So there's that decrease. Looking down the page at the very bottom, you can see that contribution as a percentage of payroll and contribution dollars that we mentioned in the prior page in the right-hand column, there's the $1,043 and the 47%. And you can see them compared to the numbers from the July 1, 2021 year and you'll see they're actually quite a bit higher. As we mentioned, that's largely driven by the investment returns as well as being driven by the cost of living adjustments. One thing we want to point out, hard to describe exactly where it is, under the, the second highlighted total on the page, there's a line that says actuarial value of assets. It has $21.5 million for July of '21 and $23.1 million for, for 2022. So just to note that what we do with actuarial evaluations is we know when we do this work, we're taking a snapshot. And we know that comparing the liabilities to the assets can, can cause a lot of volatility, primarily because you're invested in the financial markets and on any given day, the markets could be up or down a certain amount. I think just looking at today's markets, for example, there was the Fed talking about interest rates and all of a sudden the markets went way up. So that's great if your snapshot date is the day they go up, not so great if they're a day that things go down. So what we do with this actuarial of assets is we actually smooth out those investment gains and losses over five years. So last year, when we had such a big return, we didn't take all into an account. We only took 20% of it into account with the idea that we'd bring in the other 80% over the remaining next four years. Similar, for this year, we had a negative return. We recognized 20% of that downside, we'll recognize the rest of it over the next four years. So it helps to smooth things out when you have the seesawing back and forth with the investments and keeps the contributions from gyrating too much. That's the conversation around the cash contributions. Before we switch to the accounting results, which go on the ACFA, is there any questions or any discussion around the cash contributions? Okay. We can go ahead with the account.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead with the accounting then and then we can have some time at the end. So GASB stands for the Government Accounting Standards Board. They have statement number 68, which They have statement number 68, which says how you disclose this information on your audited financial statements. There, it creates a pension expense, which is different than the cash contributions and defines the balance sheet liability. So different than cash. So if we look on page 11, you can see the numbers that went on your 2022 fiscal year balance sheet. Essentially a net pension liability of $7 million, indicating the plan was about 75% funded. The pension expense was $556,000, so just under a half million. So quite a bit different than the cash contribution being recommended at $1.4 million. And they're just very different procedures and for different reasons, so that the two are not tied together in any way. Going ahead to slide 13, we just wanted to cover a couple of things that are often on folks' mind when we talk about the pension plan. So what is that? We talked about the assumptions we make. One of our big assumptions is how long folks will live. Another is when they'll retire or will they stay in employment with the, with the city until retirement? And COVID has affected those things. It's, it's changed mortality to some extent, at least for the short term. Now, we haven't seen it in the Tacoma Park. Police pension roles, so we did not see the dropping off of, of eight retirees succumbing to, to COVID. So we didn't really see it here, but it's something that's out there as a question of will COVID in the long term have a law, you know, we, we know what happened in 20 and 21 in terms of sort of an event. But will COVID be in the environment, so to speak? And will that cause a shorter life expectancy long term? The, the, the short answer is no one knows for sure. It's still being studied by the scientists and the biologists. But we are keeping our eye on it and looking at the latest literature to make sure we're adjusting appropriately. Retention has been a challenge. We've seen that a lot across a lot of different groups. Uh, where it's harder to keep officers in place. We do see more discussion, the disclosure of risk uh, on this. So that's, those are some of the things that are out there. The last slide, which you see that the presentation moved ahead to, is just a chart from NASRA, which is the National Association of State Retirement Administrators. And what this colorful chart points out, colorful chart points out is that the median long term expected return uh, assumed by state pension plans is currently right around 7%. So I mentioned you're at seven and a quarter percent. So you're a little bit higher than the median for states. Now, this has nothing, this, this says nothing about what your asset allocation is versus these others' asset allocations. So there could be very good reasons for you to be different. And these are averages, so you, you'll see that, that there, there's quite a range there. But we do just like to make sure that you're aware of what's happening in the larger pension space and what folks are thinking. Generally speaking, over the last decade, there's been a, a downward a downward movement in these assumptions. And that's what this chart shows that over, over the years. The, the, what was assumed to be the, the median return has, has gone down. We'll see what happens now with, with markets being lower than they've been and interest rates rising. We might actually see that turnaround, but for right now, it's, it's right around 7%. That's really it for our prepared presentation. Be happy to take any questions folks may have uh, on the results.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions from my colleagues before I jump in? Okay, awesome. Oops. I, I knew once I did that, I was going to, someone's going to push a button. Uh, Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, thank you. I, I have one um, specific question in appendix two. If, and one general question. In, in appendix two, it gives a number for fiscal 22. That, that I think is different from the one in the front of the report. Or are we talking about 22 and then 23 and 24?
Just to turn to that page if I could.
So this is summary of contributions in appendix two. And then on page two for the same, I think the same. It gives a different number, so I'm a little confused as to what the truth cards are.
Sure, just uh, bear with me for a second while I open that up.
Unless somebody else.
Okay, so you're looking at page two of the report.
Uh huh, fiscal 22.
Fiscal 22, where it says, um, you're looking at the 1,00406.
Yeah, and then I'm looking on appendix two and for the year ending, this ending 22. Is that the year before? Maybe that's what it is.
It is, it is, yeah. Well, yes, that's the year before.
All right, nevermind. I should have figured that out. Um, my more general question is, would you recommend that we consider changing some of the assumptions, particularly the investment return assumption?
So I, I think that it, we would want to look at that in light of uh, what you're doing from an asset allocation standpoint. Um, I think, you know, the, from the actuaries perspective. The, the, the long term rate of return, while we do want it to be reasonable, it, it's a budgeting tool. And if we're more conservative, that means we're, we're more likely over the long term to exceed that rate of return, which means we will to some extent, front load the contributions, because if we meet or exceed it, we'll contribute more now and we'll contribute less in the future versus if, if we're more aggressive and we don't make it, we'll have lower contributions today, but it will catch up to us if we don't make those returns. I do think that, you know, seeing what others doing does give a, you know, inform you about where things might stand or what's happening out there in the market, or a lot of other people in the same job you have are thinking about long term returns. But I think it, it's a question to be answered in conjunction with the asset allocation decisions you're making about where the investments are being placed and what those returns on those assets are. So I don't think it's in a vacuum. Uh, I think you probably could, but these things aren't, you know, there's not an exact, if you do it, if you do this allocation, it's exactly this amount. Uh, because of course, no one knows for sure what the long term returns are going to be. They're based on capital market assumptions and forecasts of inflation and so forth. Uh, so I think you're in the right range, would make you a little more conservatively, conservatively positioned to be at 7%. And perhaps when we do the next set of studies, I know the next pension committee meetings in March, uh, it might be worth just seeing what does it look like if we are at 7% versus seven and a quarter.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Do you have a comment?
Well, I, I appreciate Tom, because that's what I was getting ready to say. If, if there is feedback that council has, uh, we could take it before the police pension, police pension board is going to be in March.
Councilmember Hozak? Yes, thank you. Um, well, uh, Councilmember DeBala asked my first question. My second question is much more simple. I was just curious if, uh, maybe, um, Mr. Fox could comment. Uh, are we at capacity? Are we at the desired capacity for our current police force, at least when this uh, assessment was done? Since we have a fewer number of officers, it looks like that were on board at the time it was done than in the prior year. And, uh, and if, if we are not, then I, I, I would be curious why, why we might not have, uh, used maybe a production for where we were hoping to be for, for the coming year. Uh, thank you.
I believe when, when this was done, I'm, I'm not sure we were fully staffed. We are fully staffed now. Um, I'm not sure. I do not believe we were fully staffed when most of this study was done by Bolton.
And I could.
I'll let you speak to it more.
So, so I can add to that, just say, looking at back over the last, say, six or seven years. The headcount has ranged from a low of 37 to a high of 42. So it's always right in that band. So at 38, you're not low, low, but you're not the peak of 42, which was the prior year. Usually it's right around 40. Uh, I guess with just sort of normal openings in retirement and turnover, that's usually about where the headcount is.
Am I mistaken, however, that the, the difference in the number did actually make a fairly meaningful difference in the final uh, assessment of the amount needed?
It, it was, it was part of it this year. So it contributed to the, when you look at the contribution as a percentage of payroll. Because the payroll had gone down, uh, that made that percentage look bigger, even though the, the, the dollar amount of contribution hadn't risen as much. Uh, so it, it exaggerated the percentage of payroll country, uh, as, in, in terms of the contribution this particular year. Um, which I, I think what the, the translation for me was that the folks who left uh, were folks retiring who were at the top or the end of their careers at the top of their pay scales. As the, as was the person who entered drop. And so we had more of the uh, attrition at the top end and replacing with folks the lower end, which is good from a payroll budgeting standpoint. But from the pension standpoint, makes the pension payroll look a little bit lower.
Thank you. Councilmember Small?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, City Mayor Fox, I think this is probably more for you. Um, with the uh, payout and percentages of our pension for the police. I know from previous experience that that is one of the ways that you incentivize the prospect of, of retaining a police force and, and inducing people to want to be on your police force. And there, there are certainly some that don't have uh, the pension or don't operate the pension in the same way. So I'm curious about um, how strong you feel the uh, pension is as an inducement for the retention of officers? And um, where in the uh, I guess in the landscape among uh, similarly situated towns or cities, you find our um, contributions?
Councilmember Small, I would say it's, it'd be hard for me to answer that question because I haven't done an analysis of other cities and towns.
Okay.
Um, and, and whether um, our, our police pension fund uh, is an incentive uh, for those to stay on. I would say that, what I can say is um, staff were taught with the police department to develop the drop program, which that was something and, and council members were involved in that as well. So that was a, that was a big thing over the last couple of years, getting that finally done uh, with the last council. Um, but there's, there's still so much more work to do um, in, in this area um, to entice. And especially with the market factors and the changes that, that's going on to entice not just police, but any staff member in any department. It's, it's, it's going to take a lot of work moving forward, so.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Uh, well, first, thank you so much, Mr. Um, I appreciate um, your presentation. And I think you might have answered my question when you responded to Councilmember Hozak. So um, I am looking at appendix one um, and um, column six. Um, as it pertains to the unfunded actuarial accrue liability as a percentage of covered payroll. And it, it looks like um, that over the past few years, we've been um, to some degree in a bit of a, 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 a lowering of our, of, of that percentage. And, and if my read of the, the notes for this table is um, is accurate, that column represents um, the uh, adjusted for inflation, um, and basically helps us with assessing um, whether or not we have sufficient assets to pay benefits when they are due?
Yes, yes, the uh, the, the column six, which looks at the unfunded liability as a percentage of covered payroll. It's, that particular column is, is more of a, of an indication of trying, trying to put the numbers in context. So it's hard to say, you know, is, is it better, you know, is, is a $6.4 million unfunded liability, is that big or small? And so we try to put it in context by comparing it to the covered payroll. And the, the general idea is that over time, you would like that number to get smaller compared to cover payroll. Meaning that it's, it's, it's less and less of a, of a outstanding obligation compared to the overall scale of the operation. And that generally has been the case. There's definitely a, a dip down in 21, then a little increase in 22. But you'll see that 22 is still less than 2020 was there. So that's what that, that's what that column should be, should be interpreted as the, the, the final column is. It's a, almost a risk or a scaling exercise to help you put it in perspective.
And so, you know, in your response to um, I believe Councilmember Hozak, the, the point that we got the drop set up in an effort to, you know, try to help retain perhaps some of our um, more senior officers, but, but they're kind of a trading out and retiring. Um, but we're bringing in younger officers who perhaps due to their salaries and the like, their payroll amounts may not be as high. And so I guess my question is, over time, if this trend were to continue, are we expecting, will it likely be the case that we're going to start to see that percent increase, right? So if we're, if we're bringing in, if we're losing more of our senior officers to retirement, where we're going to have to pay out, but we're not necessarily bringing in you know, that those payroll numbers may be lower. I guess my, my question is how will that potentially impact?
Yeah, so I think long term, you know, if, if it's a healthy workforce, it's a healthy group, and you're going to have you know, the retirement of more senior officers at higher paid levels will open positions for the younger officers to move up. Keeping, you know, a good flow of, of individuals in there. And so over, over the long term, it's really balanced. You know, if you're staying in that 40, 40 person headcount range that you've been in. Uh, if there's no reason to expand or contract dramatically from those numbers. Then I, I think that even with that sort of turnover or officers moving to drop, it won't be so precipitous as to have a long term impact. So we'll see fluctuations year to year. But I think on a long term basis, I wouldn't expect that we would see uh, a trend caused just by that type of, of turnover. And part of the reason is that when you bring a, a new person in. They're coming in, of course, with no service with the city. And so their pension is nothing when they first start. So they have a payroll, but they don't have really much, if any, liability to contribute to that unfunded liability versus the, the longer service officer with the higher pay who has a bigger pension. Um, and, and so that's, you know, so they really haven't had the making of most of that liability. So there's a lot of dynamics, but I think again, long term, if we stay about that 40, 40-ish group size. The normal attrition, retirement, and then other folks moving up through the ranks, being replaced by junior officers should keep that pretty steady.
And so, a, and again, that's, and that is very helpful. So as long as we're keeping that headcount around where we have been. If we were to assuming cutting that headcount in half, right?
Right.
That could potentially increase that percentage, correct?
Right, that would, that would, you know, if you were to go, yeah, change this, because with the plan like, such as yours. If you were to go to 20 officers, if you think about it as sort of a productivity thing, right now you have 40 officers whose productivity, so to speak, is, is supporting the plan. If you went to 20 officers, now the, the burden is twice as much on the productivity needed uh, from the officers. You know, it's not, you're not making a product, so it's not quite the same idea, but that, that concept. So if, yeah, if you, if you dramatically decrease the size of the police force, there'd be more folks who probably would move into retirement more quickly because they wouldn't have a choice. Um, and they would just be a lower payroll. So that it would make the numbers look upside down, the plan would become uh, much more mature. So right now, um, about half the, half the groups in terms of the headcount, about half the group is made up of active officers. Over time, any pension plan gets mature, uh, individuals retire, they continue to, 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 to receive their pension. You'll see the plan become more mature with more non-active members than there are active members. But if there's a big, a big change in the staffing, that would accelerate that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm not proposing that at all, but I do think, I do that there are a lot of uh, people who, who maybe think, oh, we could just cut. You know, but there, there are other implications um, in some positions. in some positions than others. So but thank you so much for for walking us through that. So are there any other questions? No. All right. Well, thank you so much. We got you out of here.
You're welcome.
Kind of at a reasonable time.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to do this via Zoom. Hopefully, hopefully, next year, we'll we'll all be in the in the council chambers.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again for this good report, and we appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Goodbye.
All right. Next on the docket, economic development update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council have Director Eubanks will do the presentation from here.
Excuse me. Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Managers. As City Manager Fox just mentioned, my name is David Eubanks. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development. Pleasure to be with you. Pleasure to meet you all in person, and congratulations on sitting with us. Very much looking forward to to working with you all over the course of your tenure. I am not going to speak to you very long today. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, as well as give you a little bit of information about HCD, just to give you a bit of context before I turn it over to Economic Development Manager Ira Cowler. So Housing and Community Development is made up of five divisions: planning, economic development, code enforcement, arts and humanities, and housing. Each division is led by a division manager, and it's my responsibility to oversee each division in aggregate. As a department, we're responsible for a number of things. And to summarize, we encourage the expansion of the local economic development programming, support development of diverse affordable housing. We overall improve the quality of quality of life for residents, and we plan for the growth of the city. And we do this through a number of ways. Just as a a summary, we administer grants, we provide technical assistance to nonprofits, businesses, and tenant associations. We fund development projects, we manage development projects like the library. We oversee compliance of our rent stabilization law, and we enforce our code, as well as act as liaisons to the county's economic development and community development resources, just to name a few. As you might imagine, often, our work is very visible and very impactful, and therefore we are very intentional about how we engage the community to seek feedback on many of the programs and projects that we have. As a, for instance, this Saturday, as you all have been invited to, between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., our Acting Planning Manager Alex Friedman is going to be leading a walk slash bike tour of two of our projects, the Metropolitan Branch Trail, as well as the proposed New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way Section D. The purpose of the tour is really to engage the community about the projects, the proposed projects, and all that we plan on doing. We encourage council to attend, as well as any other engagements that we have over the course of your tenure. Obviously, you represent your communities, and so your feedback is very valuable, both as council members, but also as residents of the city. Understanding the City Manager's Office is going to give us the opportunity to give you a much more in-depth understanding of who we are, not only HCD, but also other departments within the city. So I won't go into the detail of all of the wonderful programs and projects that we have active, but I will say again that we very much appreciate your engagement and look forward to working with you. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our Economic Development Manager to talk a little bit about how we engage our business associations and the the impact that they have and have had historically, but also more more presently over the last couple of months. Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Ira Cowler, Economic Development Manager, sorry, just dealing with some order of operations here. So like David mentioned, you're going to be hearing a few updates from some of our economic development service partners. We traditionally take kind of a once a year annual approach to let you know about all the exciting work that our partners have been doing. So you'll be hearing, I believe, first from Amy from Discover Long Branch, Long Branch Business League, and then from Laura from OTBA Main Street Tacoma, and finally from Kaylee at Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. And then I'll come back up and give you just a brief update after that. So a few presentations to go through, and Amy, I believe, if you want to come up, can kick us off.
Hello. It is such a pleasure to be in front of the new council, so congratulations to everyone. We are very excited in Long Branch to work with each of you, specifically Councilmember Hanzak and, of course, Mayor Circe. Before we get started, because I don't see it up yet, thank you to everyone who I personally get to hang out with when you so Councilmember Dybala has come to our festival, our Long Branch Festival, Mayor Circe, as a council member previously, thank you so much for coming out, and we hope to see all of you participate in the events that we we put on in Long Branch. And it looks like we're up. Thank you. So I work for MHP. MHP is one of the largest housing, affordable housing developers in the state and the largest in Montgomery County. We administer the Long Branch Business League and have had for the last decade plus. And so we do all of the administration work, but we also do a lot of the funding. We find all of the the funding sources. We do all of the advocacy, all the organizing, we strategize. And so that's all the work that's happening behind the scenes with the Long Branch Business League is because of the work that MHP does, myself and my colleague Paul Grenier. We've done a huge rebranding in the last four years, and so you're going to see some of those really beautiful murals that we've done. We've just finished this beautiful mural up on Long Branch. Thank you. The next slide, please. So what we decided in the last few years was that the best way to support the businesses was to have the businesses support the community and to give back a lot more in the form of events, the form of just kind of community development as a whole. So we have now, we try to do an event every month outside of January, February, March, because it's way too cold to do that. So starting in April, we have an Earth Day event that we do, and then obviously in May is Cinco de Mayo. And then from there, we've just kind of been trying some new things, and then we start, we end up with an event in September called our Long Branch Festival, which you'll see that I'm representing our T-shirt here. We had a really successful movie night, the first one that we've had in October. We we play, we showed Sonic the Hedgehog, and we had three hundred people show up from our community. The president of the Long Branch Business League, John Angel, who owns La Casita, did an incredible job getting out and letting people from all walks of life in Long Branch know about this, and the turnout was incredible. And then we just did our Long Branch 5K, and Councilmember Hanzak was so wonderful in helping volunteer for that. And then, of course, I always want to make sure that everyone knows that we are also doing an event for in that where you can meet Santa. Santa is coming to Long Branch. He speaks both Spanish and English, and he's very jolly. We're very excited to have all of these things happen. What the reason why we do these, again, they're all free. It's to get people to come to be very comfortable in the Long Branch Business District. We know that we have some pedestrian issues and things like that, so we really want people in the community to feel like this is their business district. And the reason I'm here right now is because a lot of that, a large portion of that business district is actually in the city boundaries. And aside from that, we also serve so many people who live in Tacoma Park, regardless of whether the businesses are within the boundaries or not. So I think that that's a very important thing to to make, a a point to make, is that we are constantly serving the city of Tacoma Park. Next slide, please. So there's just some a few stats. The this last year, the number of main events that we did, that that the Long Branch Business League specifically put on was seven. I think the, I can't see what this says underneath. I think it says thirty-five businesses that we directly served. And so there are actually over a hundred businesses in Long Branch. A lot of them, we don't actually get to touch a lot, but ones that we've we've, whether it's a facade improvement, or we helped negotiate a contract, or we did some sort of work for them. Over the last year was thirty-five. We added four businesses, including one in the one in the city of Tacoma Park. And then the number of of physical projects that we did or some sort of program that we put on that directly impacted a business was thirty-two over the last year. And the number of events doesn't actually reflect how many events that individual businesses put on. So El Golfo, as we know, puts on an innumerable amount of of community-based fundraising events and things like that that they do all the time. El Gavilon has started to do a lot more events as well, and so that is not included in that in that stat. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We do, since since we're stuck here, we do have two different distinguishing factors in the types of businesses that we support. They're micro businesses and brick and mortar businesses. And so if you work at home and you, but you still live within the 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 boundaries of Long Branch, which is quite expansive, then you would be, you you could join as a micro business. You'll see we we the, okay, perfect, awesome. The high, some of the highlights of some of the projects that we do that include included in that thirty-two number, so the businesses are totally capable of taking care of all of the things that they need to take care of. They're the most innovative and genius people. The problem is they don't have enough time and enough capacity to actually do a lot of that work, nor do they necessarily have the the contacts to make it streamlined. So in the case of Mansa Kunda, who is one of our business members on Flower Avenue, he was having some issues with his patio, where he wanted some beautification, he wanted to feel like it was a more of a of a of a permanent space for him to be able to use, but he also had a lot of people walking through it, making it feel a little bit less like it was a safe for his patrons, as well as bicycling through it, which is not safe, no matter what, so please don't do that. And so he didn't know how to get the the project that he had in mind paid for. He didn't really know how to move forward with it. So I came to him, I asked him how I could help him. He explained it. And then I came to the city, spoke with Ira, and I actually negotiated this whole process, the the whole thing for him. Ira and I kept going back and forth, and we finally figured it out, and the way to make sure that he could get this entire project finished. And so that was a really great synergy between the Long Branch Business League and the city of Tacoma Park, but also a way in which we were able to add our services to help a business out. And so he has been able to have this beautiful, these this beautiful patio, and that has also some electricity added. Another one is that a lot of people didn't know that we have a really amazing floral shop in Long Branch, partly because of their advertising that they did themselves, but also just because it was kind of the way that they that their storefront looked, it didn't necessarily look very inviting. So we did a facade improvement, in which we did an update on their their signage, on we painted the front, and then we actually brought in a consultant that is right now at this very, well, not this very minute, because it is almost ten o'clock at night. They they, he's coming in and actually doing an interior consult consultation on redesigning the entire interior, so it feels very friendly, so that people know it's a floral shop first and foremost. And so if you go, if you go and and go to Roxanna's, please do, you will feel very friendly, and you'll know exactly what where to go and what you're what you're getting when you walk in. So those are just some of the highlights of the many, many, many projects that we do all the time in Long Branch. Next slide, please. So finally, lots of people ask, how can they support? Lots of people don't really know that, you know, we're in the, again, we're in a branding process. If you haven't seen our most beautiful new mural, you will, you will soon know, Long Branch is right there. It is a place, it's a destination. But a some really great ways to follow, to support the Long Branch Business League is to follow us on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and on our website, check it out. We have a really fantastic following, but also come to our events, come spend money at El Golfo, buy a drink at El Gavilon, go get your dry cleaning done at Reliable Dry Caners, and your taxes done at DP Tax. We are really excited about all of the things that are happening. We have a lot of, a lot of financial support coming from all sorts of foundations, but we're really excited about having a formal partnership partnership with the city of Tacoma Park. I think that's it. Yeah. Do we want to just move on? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association. I do not know if he's going to be able to load it, so I'm going to use my laptop, and you're going to miss the pretty pictures until he gets it up, but I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight. I thought because, in addition to giving an update on what we've done for the city for the in our 2020 fiscal year 2022 agreement, I also just wanted to give an overview of what we do to the new council, with the new council members here. So quick facts, we were started in 2003 by businesses on both the Maryland and DC side. We're located around the metro. We run from Butternut and Fourth Street in the district at where the Tacoma Theater is, and we go all the way through to the co-op on the Maryland side, and that's our commercial district, and we have three distinct nodes that make it up, the the DC, Fourth Street area, Old Town, and the junction. We're an official Main Street designated by the State of Maryland. We just won Best Main Street in DC as voted by the Washington City Paper, which is great to see. We're a membership organization, so we encourage our businesses to, great, you're up. May I get the clicker? Thank you. We encourage businesses to join because it's the right thing to do to help support. We're a nonprofit, and we're here to support them, but we treat every single business the same, no matter if they're a member or not. About thirty percent of our income comes from grants from both Maryland and DC, with Tacoma Park, Maryland being the consistent grant. We've got about a hundred and twenty streetfront businesses, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of retail space, and our rent now is between thirty and fifty dollars a square foot. Okay. Hey. Here's a map of our area of oversight. So with our agreement with the city of Tacoma Park, this is exactly what what what's in it, ongoing business support, so technical assistance. We support the businesses on a day-to-day basis. How do I find this information? I get calls on various subjects. I could be helping a business start a food truck to figuring out permitting at the county level, where to get grants at the state, site selection with both property owners and business owners, also guidance on city, county, state regulations, availability of grants that are there, access to capital, and I'm going to talk about our grant fund and our revolving loan fund, access to programming, that we host various topics and workshops, and then general corridor marketing promotion and events and placemaking. Okay. If you could forward the slide, please. So from, just to go over some of our access to capital, so we have distributed over $346,000 over the past two years to our small businesses in the form of micro grants. These grant, about $280,000 of it came from a state of Maryland grant that we applied for and received. Other portions of it came from the district, and then we also fundraised in the community. Our community is very generous, and we were able to make grants anywhere from a thousand to five thousand dollars to the businesses. We also run a revolving loan fund. It started in 2009, when Roz was in my role, and we have made over, it's a $150,000 loan fund, and we've made over sixteen loans to businesses. So we loan it out, we have a loan committee that evaluates applications, and we, it's usually like a three-year loan at five percent interest, and we've got one active loan currently. And usually, they're small loans, so fifty to ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars. And usually they're small loans, so 50 to, $10,000 to $50,000. And it usually helps a business get over that final hump of something that they didn't plan for during their, the construction. So in terms of workshops, and please go forward two slides. Workshops and consultants. We've hosted workshops over the past year to help the businesses using local resources that, that oversee the workshop. We also hired consultants to help our businesses with social media, doing one-on-one support to get their programs up and running and turn it back over to them, so they can, they can do it themselves. Advance the slide, please. So general commercial district promotion. We run the Main Street Tacoma website, social media on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We write press releases to area press, neighborhood announcements, everything to get the word out, to let people know that we've got stuff going on and we want visitors here to, to support our businesses. One more, thank you. So as, just a general over, commercial district overview, we've had 10 openings in the past year, or the last couple are going to be trickling through in the next couple of weeks, that we all celebrated with our recent ribbon cuttings. We've also had some closures this past year. Advance, please. We, we lost Republic, which was a big surprise to all of us. But I'm happy to report, there's a letter of intent on the space, and hopefully we'll be able to make an announcement very soon. There was a lot of interest. Tacoma Park is a highly desirable, sought-after location. Frederick's Dry Cleaners just closed. This is on the DC side, but it really has become our only available streetfront space. Tacoma Framers is in the process of closing, and I'm pleased to report that Richardson School of Music, its neighbor, is working to buy the building now. So a tenant will hopefully become a property owner in our commercial district. And lastly, the Healy Surgeon folks, they retired this past year. I still think he's working out of the basement there. But Cielo Rojo will be expanding into that space from their restaurant that's located across from the gazebo. They'll keep the gazebo restaurant and turn it into a burrito shop, and then they'll have this new, larger location. Advance, please. So what we have, really, as I said, is 266 Carroll Street Northwest. The other business, 7221 Carroll Avenue, we've got the Tacoma Auto Shop is up for sale. He's trying to lease it, he's trying to sell it. He's still running his business there. But that's it for availability. We came out of the pandemic 100% leased, which is really unusual. But I think we're in that sweet spot, that we are enough of the suburbs that we had everybody working from home and supporting the businesses. So we've done well. The only, the last bit of availability we have really are basement spaces and second-floor spaces. And I use the, the picture of the Bank of America building here just to highlight it. It's going to go through a second sale shortly, and hopefully we'll be able to make an announcement soon. But that too is, has a planned business coming in. But in the meantime, as Mayor Cersei said, come on out to the market at the bank. They're, they're using the spa, the space for these artist markets over the next few weeks. They just clocked 1,200 people through there the other day, so very successful. Next slide, please. I wanted to give this residential snapshot, because while I don't work with them a whole lot, it has such a major impact on our commercial district to see that we have, and actually, one of these numbers goes up 100, just based on a meeting I attended. So we have over 1,300 units of new residential units coming right near the metro, which is, if you look at them, being double occupancy, some of them triple occupancy, I've learned, we'll have over 2,000 new members in our community, which is terrific for all of our businesses. But we need to plan for it, we need to think about it. We also need to think about infrastructure, we need to think about the lights, we need to think about parking. But in general, we, we're looking at this as a huge positive for our community to have all these new residents right next to our local businesses. Next slide, please. Just going through the programming that we talked about in terms of commercial district placemaking. Over the past couple of years, we've really worked hard on making these outdoor dining spaces out of necessity originally, but they're there still and being so actively used. It's so great to walk down Laurel Avenue on a Tuesday afternoon and see the block full, which is, which is just terrific. So we did three outdoor dining spots that we're still keeping up. One in Laurel Avenue, one at BYU Morrison Park, and the other at the gazebo. Next slide. Other placemaking activities we've done are public art. So we introduced the Rainbow Crosswalks. We've also introduced, started out as a street barrier, but morphed into a bike rack. So then we made a second one that actually is a bike rack. And those are blocking traffic on Laurel Avenue. Next slide, please. We also, this is on the DC side. We put ground murals under bike racks on the district side. We also participated in the Cherry Blossom Seat Program, but that was out last year in lieu of a parade. Next slide. The active project that I'm working on now, from both a placemaking and business support standpoint, is a $100,000 grant that we received from the state of Maryland, from a safety grant category that they've called it. So part of that money is being used for a project we're calling Reimagining Laurel Avenue. So right now Laurel Avenue is closed, but it's sort of haphazard. We dropped a couple of barriers to block traffic, we dropped some seating. What if we rethought how it's actually being used? Could it be used differently? Could we change things to make it more functional? So we have hired a consultant. We've been working with focus groups throughout the city. We are also, and they're going to come back with some proposals that we hope to bring to council to say, here's some, some cool ideas that they've brought forward. So that's going on now. And the other area that we've tasked the consultant with is trying to see if we can get the farmer's market back on Laurel Avenue. With the outdoor dining spaces there, the community space and the private dining, they just don't fit on Sundays. I think many people enjoy it in the back, as do the farmers, as many farmers. Not, everybody's sort of split on everything, of course. But they, because there's a lack of visibility back there, and it costs three times more for them to rent the parking lot than it does to, to rent the street. So the city has made a grant available to them this year, but it'd be, be nice to see if we can get them back. And the second part of the grant, we're going to be making direct grants to our small businesses. I think I'm still back one. The, the grants to the small businesses will be safety grants. So we've done this before. We've given them money for security systems and cameras and lighting. But we're also going to focus this money on plate glass window replacement, which is kind of tricky in a historic district, because we've been butting up against regulations in terms of, of how we can, about not being able to install tempered glass that's safer, energy efficient. So we started some conversations at the county level, and we think we've made some progress, and we're hoping to grant money to some property owners to be able to upgrade these windows. Next slide, please, thank you. So the, the events that we've done to attract visitors over the past year, we've located these events strategically in the Junction, on Fourth Street, on Laurel Avenue, to draw people to various parts of our commercial district. So we held six events, and over the past year, they were, they were so well-attended. I think everybody was cooped up for, for so long that they came out in force at these events. Next slide, please. We also got behind other well-organized big events, and I tried to do the groundwork for them. Helped them with permitting, street closures, promotion, and I'm hoping to do more of that. You know, six is probably my max, I'm a one-person operation there. I don't, but I think I could help leverage other organizations putting on events that do the same, get the same results, draw people to our commercial district. Next slide, please. I want to invite you to our upcoming events. As Mayor Cersei said, Pajama Rama's this Sunday. Eight to 11, we're doing shopping in the, your pajamas in our local shops. And then we've got a holiday market at the Tacoma Theater in the afternoon. And then a, a week from Friday is our gifting market, which is an outdoor market that was really fun last year, with lots of lights and fire pits. And we've got local restaurants and artists selling items. So I just want to end it with one last slide, about one other program that we do offer that I want to encourage council members to share with your businesses, too. We started this shop Tacoma e-Gift Card a couple of years ago, during the pandemic. So over the past two years, we've sold about 280 cards and almost $20,000 worth of value. And basically, this is a, a way that someone could buy a $100 gift card. It's never actually printed, it's electronic on your phone or email, and use it across multiple businesses. And it's just like a credit card. And we invited all the businesses in Tacoma Park to participate in this program. And it's new, it's hard, there's no, so people were hesitant. So there's no fee, but I want to encourage people to help us get the word out, because we'd love to have more members, business members in Tacoma Park participate in the program. And it's a great time of year with the holidays for that. Good, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Laura. And I believe we have Kaylee De La Puente virtually here from Tacoma Langley Crossroads.
Give me just one second, I apologize. I believe I shared my screen. Can anyone confirm if you can see it virtually?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Okay. And now, okay, I think we're looking good here. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Kaylee De La Puente. I'm the Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. We are the oldest of the commercial associations you're hearing from tonight. We were established in 1987, and our jurisdiction, and in general, I'll describe it, as runs along New Hampshire Avenue, University Boulevard. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit business association. And we are responsible for managing the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District that was created by the City of Tacoma Park in the 80s. Our activities fall into about three different buckets here. And that includes marketing and promotion for the overall area, maintenance and beautification, and security. And we are funded by a business license fee on all businesses and property owners in the crossroads, along with a service contract with the City of Tacoma Park, an annual service contract. You can, you can find all the details about the structure of the CBA and the associated license fees in Chapter 836 of Tacoma Park Municipal Code. And like my other colleagues, I'm going to be providing you with a review of our, how our FY '22 went. We have, we had a pretty strong year as far as openings go. I believe we have 12 here, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 new businesses in FY '22. And you can see here, there's, there's a range of different types of businesses, from retail to professional services. And in regards to vacancy, this is not new for the crossroads, but our vacancy remains extremely limited. Any of the vacant spaces that you do currently see from the streetfront in the crossroads are actually accounted for, for new forthcoming businesses that we're very excited about. One of the largest vacant spaces that we had in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads was the former Salvation Army space, which is about 12,000 square feet, which, as you all know, is now the new temporary space for the City of Tacoma Park Library. We're very excited to, to host them in that location. And we are hopeful for continued activation of that space while the library is there and afterwards in its next life. I'll, I'll begin with our, our first tier of activities and the largest part of our budget. And, and that is our maintenance activities. We, our maintenance services include twice a week litter pickup throughout the common areas of the commercial district. That basically is the streets along University of New Hampshire and also Halton Lane. We also have contracted services for monthly landscape maintenance. And the majority of that maintenance is along Halton Lane. And we have, as I'm sure you've seen, 53 ceramic planters along University of New Hampshire and 14 hanging planters on Halton Lane. And additionally, we have welcoming street pole banners that you see on the, on the electricity poles along University of New Hampshire with business owner faces and bilingual welcome to all of our visitors to the crossroads. And another huge part of our activities is beautification and public art. We had two major public art projects in FY '22. One of the largest projects was the unfortunately untitled mural at the Citibank location. And this was a project funded in partnership by JBG Smith and also in partnership with the City of Tacoma Park. And the artist is Annabelle Perea. And it really is part of what you'll see as an increasing landscape of mural art in, in the crossroads. And, and, you know, it's really been a big focus for us, and, you know, many of our buildings and properties are fairly outdated from the 50s. And so we are trying to produce a more attractive, welcoming view for, for the crossroads. And our second public art project was supported by a smaller grant from the state of Maryland. And this was for placing pub, placing graphic art designs on vacant commercial window spaces through using vinyl wrap technology. And we, the intention for this project is, we, with the pandemic, we were seeing not a long-lasting, but a temporary increase in vacant commercial spaces with a couple of our businesses that did not survive through the pandemic. So addressing that need, we activated these windows with something that could contribute to, to the community. And actually, it was so well-received that the property owners actually purchased additional vinyl wraps for the space. So we consider this a very successful project from FY '22. Another part of our portfolios of scope of services is our events activity. Really, our, our activity is focused on one major event a year. This year, it usually falls in about the spring or, or the summer. And our focus area for activating is really Ann Street and the crossroads. And this year, we held our Summer Mercado on June 25th. It was a, a day with 19 local vendors of, of food and arts and crafts. We had three wonderful musical acts at our festival main stage. We had bilingual entertainment for, for children, thanks to a partnership with Veronica at the Tacoma Park Library. And we also had beer from our partners at Silver Branch Brewery. And, you know, our events portfolio is probably, is, is a little bit newer than some of my colleagues. So we're, we're growing, and we're trying to get the word out about our events more and more each year. So we had about 200 to 300 attendees at our, our Summer Mercado. Oh, and here is some more fun pictures from the day. So, okay. Another, next, I'm going to move on to our activities with marketing and promotion for the area. One of our biggest focus areas for marketing in FY '22 was improving the social media presence of the, of the crossroads commercial district as a whole, with us as an association, and also with our businesses as a whole. Our businesses traditionally, we, we don't have a lot of businesses in the crossroads that were very active on social media and had a very strong social media presence. So we, we did envision that this would take a little more hands-on work to aid our businesses to enter the world of social media marketing. And we entered into a great partnership with the Purple Line Corridor Coalition, who was able to provide the crossroads with the assistance of Catherine Wright Conan of Rosie Owl Creative. And I believe we had over 100 hours of direct, one-on-one social media assistance with, I believe she touched upon about eight businesses in the crossroads. And this was very direct, one-on-one assistance with businesses, where she had the keys to the castle and was really able to help them. and was really able to help them produce specific content for their pages. And the result is, this is, I'm just giving you screenshots of their Instagram pages. This is Red Chili's. So this is just taking a general look at their Instagram page, starting at a page that had nothing. And six months later has such vibrant reels and postings, I think is quite impactful to see. And this is Kobe Japan, one of our newer business members. And you can see the same thing here. Unfortunately, I couldn't, I needed some technical assistance figuring out how to share Instagram reels and a PowerPoint. But I think this just kind of shows you the level of vibrancy now. Just a quick look at the page, you can see the difference this has made over the course of the year. And we are really looking to continue this work. You know, we're not all the way there with all of our businesses. There's still more work to be done. And there's still more work to be done to help our businesses grab on and have the ability to manage some of this themselves. But in that time, we are continuing to invest and work on this kind of direct programming with our businesses. I believe our last bucket of activity here is security. That is always a big concern for the Crossroads Commercial District. As you may know, Ward 6 is consistently the part of the city that faces the highest amount of crime in the city. Part of that is because we're directly along two-state highways, such busy routes in and out of the city. And we have had a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings, a lot of partnerships with the Tacoma Park Police Department over, I'd say, the past two years. I really want to thank them for their commitment and partnership with us. One of the additions to security in the crossroads over the past year was the hiring of an off-duty Tacoma Park Police Officer to do a limited foot patrol every weekend in the crossroads. We realized that there was a certain lack of eyes on the ground on the weekend hours. Certain parts, certain other parts of the city are closed on the weekends. Code enforcement's closed on the weekends. The CDA is closed on the weekends. So we really realized there was a certain level of service on the weekends and eyes on the ground that was not really being addressed or accounted for beyond the patrols. It needed a little bit more than the general patrols that were in the schedule for the City of Tacoma Park Police Force. So we were able to get a grant from the state of Maryland that allowed us to hire an off-duty Tacoma Park Police Officer every weekend. And that has been very helpful so far. Not just for an enforcement perspective, although it has been helpful in that, but also for gathering issues or information and intel on certain areas of need or challenges that our commercial district is seeing that we may need to find other partners to address these issues. And secondly, we also have been working on getting additional security cameras into the crossroads, particularly at the level of, as you know, we have large-scale 1950-style shopping plazas. And it's been noted that it's very important to have external security cameras in these shopping plazas for the police to effectively track and detail and follow up on crime. And a lot of our larger commercial plazas do not have external security cameras. So we have established a security camera rebate program to incentivize our property owners to install a larger-scale security camera system in their shopping plazas. And we are hoping, we are hoping to be able to issue our first rebate in FY23. We're still working on it. And we're continuing to work with our property owners and really push this issue. And a second issue that we're looking to find additional investment for is helping our business owners. It's one thing to have external security cameras, but of course, we also need quality security cameras in individual businesses. So there has been a recognized need that business owners need some assistance, either installing cameras to begin with or upgrading the security cameras they have to the level that they need to be. So that is an area of funding that we are looking to fill. Lastly, I wanted to give you, I talked a lot about the past year, but I wanted to let you know where our kind of focus is for this upcoming year. One of our major challenges in the crossroads and our focus area for the future is addressing the challenge of the lack of public space in the crossroads. You'll note that a lot of my colleagues mentioned their awesome events activity that really creates a vibrant commercial district. And the challenge that we find in the crossroads is not necessarily having great places to invite a crowd to. And so that is something that we have been having a lot of conversations. We've been working directly with the City of Tacoma Park Planning Department. We partnered with the University of Maryland Department of Architecture and Landscaping to, on a smaller scale, dreamscape visioning for what could be for some potential open area spaces, public space in the crossroads. And I have this picture here because it's one, you know, without redevelopment, there's not a lot of extent areas that could viably be used for public space. However, there is the possibility that redevelopment might take a while. And we don't necessarily, and our businesses don't necessarily have that time to wait to address this problem of common public space. So this is one of those unique areas, I won't spend too much time on it, that's actually in existence and viable for creating some imaginative form of landscaping, tables, gathering space. And it is right behind the Walgreens. This is the drive-thru. And at the top of the hill there would be the Aldi's right there. And it probably doesn't look, you probably have never seen this. It probably doesn't look like much. But when you go and actually stand in this area, it's quite flat on the top with a beautiful view all the way to College Park and a fairly wide area of land. So I just wanted to introduce to you one of the one of the areas we've been looking at and spending some time thinking on at the CDA. And also, here's just a brief, it's kind of hard to see, but I just wanted to give you just a little taste of some of the imagining, because that's what this is at this stage. What could be, you'll notice that in this design from one of our University of Maryland students, they have some shade, some tables, an area for either, I believe, oh, that would be a food truck plaza or it could be, you know, vendor stalls potentially. You'll notice they played with the hill a little bit and put some little stone seats down here. All sorts of things. But on a wider scale, these are kind of elements of need, if not here, things that we need in the area in general, areas for people to come together to eat, to gather, to watch a concert. And, you know, a gathering space. Here's some more just fun imaging. You'll notice that's by the Citibank. And playing with this idea of, I believe, what's that called? Temporary vendor stalls. And that's another concept which we have been exploring as a possibility for the crossroads. How do we, if, you know, our rent levels are quite high in the crossroads, how do we create spaces that entrepreneurs can feasibly pop up in and have a space in the crossroads if they don't need the, you know, if they don't need 2,000 square feet and they can't afford the rent for that? What creative ways, what creative methods could we use to create spaces for the next generation of entrepreneurs that might want to move into the crossroads? Which is a large goal for us as a commercial district in general, bringing in the next generation of entrepreneurs. Just some more, some more visioning of possibility. And I am gonna leave it at that. I don't know if we have questions at the end of this, but I would be happy to answer.
Thank you, Kaylee. So, Madam Mayor, we do have a presentation from city staff as well, but we're happy to pause and maybe take some questions, if you'd prefer to do it that way.
Yes, I think it would be great for us to take some questions based on the presentation. I do just want to take a quick pause. I know that we're all in new council, but we have a new rule that once we hit 10 o'clock, that we just confirm that folks are okay with us continuing to proceed with the meeting. So are there any just general concerns about us moving forward?
No concerns from the staff and either.
And so in an attempt to make sure that we don't have council meetings that go until 2:00 a.m., which we had a tendency to do in the past, we just make a cognizant effort to pause at 10 o'clock because we do have the ability to defer conversations to a future council meeting. Again, yeah. So. Excellent. All right. So are there any questions for our presenters? Any questions? All right, well, go ahead. Councilmember Gibson.
That was very impressive, all three presentations. I guess, just was wondering if there's been any way or any effort to kind of track increased revenue for the businesses that over time, one year to the next, or is that too difficult to do?
I mean, no, we haven't. I mean, typically, our businesses sort of have been reluctant sharing financial information. The info we did track over the pandemic was, we tried to capture grant money received and loans received by the businesses to gauge how much was coming in, but I don't have sales data.
And I think just to add a quick caveat to that, you'll hear in our presentation about some city grants that we did. We did try and collect some revenue data as part of those applications, but certainly not comprehensive.
All right, Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all of you for coming and doing this. This was really informative and a lot of fun. As you talked about the events that I've been to, for example. But it's a question about the businesses that are not in any of the current associations. I noted with great interest that Monse Kunda has joined the Long Branch Association, even though they're not. It's not free and they're not that close. And so I thought that was great. But there's a strip on New Hampshire in Ward, primarily in Ward 2. There's a couple others scattered here and there. So my question would be, what's the long-term thought on those? They're eligible for city programs.
Certainly, yes. So, you know, we're very lucky to have some great business service partners who cover a large amount of our businesses. We certainly recognize that that does not cover all of our businesses. And that is where it is incumbent upon city staff to step up in city services, which are available for all businesses, obviously, but we try and pay special attention to those businesses that we know are not getting outreach from other organizations.
And I would just like to echo what some of the presenters said, that to belong to one of these, to be a member, there is some cost associated for the business itself, correct, for all three of these?
So interestingly, we have, I think, three pretty unique systems. I'm happy to let each of you guys share if you'd like about how businesses operate.
Sure. So for the Long Branch Business League, again, we will serve any of the businesses that are in the area. Micro businesses and brick and mortar businesses are distinguished differently. Micro businesses is $50 a year and brick and mortars are $150 a year. So these are simply just skin in the game. This doesn't really affect our operations by any scope. So it's just to make sure that they're engaged. That's what we do.
We operate the same way. We have a tiered membership rate per size of business. But we treat every business the same. We would support everyone. The only activity I think that we sort of hook to membership is access to our revolving loan fund. So if you want a loan from us, we ask you to join, but we'll take you at the lowest tier, even if that's not the size of your business. So we try to make it easy.
Does Kaylee have something?
Yeah, I'm here. Apologies. And we operate differently. We operate under a mandatory license fee assessed by the City of Tacoma Park and collected by the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. So it is mandated on every business and property owner within the geographic boundaries of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. And all the ins and outs of the structure of that is in Chapter 836 of the City of Tacoma Park Municipal Code.
Councilmember Dibala. Thank you so much for these incredible presentations. I really enjoyed them. And I feel very energized by what we can do as a city, listening to all of you. I have questions that I can ask right after Ira, you speak. But one quick one is, I guess, as a placeholder, can we, maybe you could speak either during your presentation or right now to how we could think of the relative financial value, actually, of each of these different organizations to the city? And obviously, that is not in any way representative of their unique value and added to the city. But I think it's very important to kind of consider that and also how many businesses fall within the scope of each of those that are within the boundaries of the City of Tacoma Park? Because then it sort of speaks a little bit to how we might think about revenue flows that come from the city versus from other sources. And I'd really be interested in that kind of information at some point. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. And I'll just add, you know, we do, as part of kind of our service contracts, ask each association or service contract provider to provide kind of an inventory of businesses and services provided and whatnot. And so we're happy to kind of share that information as well with council.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, and maybe Ira, you'll speak to this, but following up on Councilmember Dibala's question. There are a number of businesses, you well know, in Ward 3 on New Hampshire Avenue. And that's a pretty significant business district of its own. I'm just kind of wondering where that stands in terms of any kind of entity that serves them apart from the city? And what's the city doing?
Sure, yeah. So again, the city is, we try and remain more active in our outreach with those businesses. Again, because we're aware there's not necessarily an active service organization helping them out. So for example, when we did our small business grant program in the spring, we made sure to go door-to-door to New Hampshire Avenue businesses, specifically to make sure that they were aware of that program. You know, I think, I'll just say, kind of in general, business organizations, business associations are huge advantages for business communities. And we are. uh, advantages for business communities. And we are very lucky to have, um, the three brick and mortar, very, very strong, uh, business organizations that you'll hear in our presentation. Uh, one non-brick and mortar association as well, who, who help us with our work here. But, uh, uh, kind of a lot of that work is incumbent upon, um, kind of active organizing from those businesses and active organizing from the folks who are leading those organizations. So a lot of that has to happen organically and, you know, we continue to work with our business partners and to encourage that work. But it's, uh, I would say it's not necessarily as easy as just kind of, uh, placing down a new organization and funding a new organization in area. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, other kind of outreach work which we continue to do and will need to do to, to get to that point.
Councilmember Small.
I, I think that there's a, uh, with, to follow up on that question, I guess. Is there any sort of, um, adherence in the long-term or intersection between the business associations and the sector plans for that area? And I'm thinking more particularly about if we're talking about New Hampshire Avenue and around into the crossroads corridor.
Sure, yeah. So I think I'll, I'll, um, just say very briefly, you know, um, David E. Banks was up here earlier, kind of speaking about our broader vision as HCD. And I'll just say that we recognize the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, uh, has had a lot of great plans that have been done in the past and a lot of great recommendations and actions that, you know, we're excited as an entire department to, to start taking on. And those are going to involve both economic development work, housing work, as well as planning work. And so I, I don't know if that's a, that's a great answer, but I think it's a, it's a question we've been working with actively on a staff level and that we hope to come to you guys with, uh, a lot more updates and, and policies on the future here.
Councilmember Small, do you have any other?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, my bad.
All right. Well, thank you. So.
Um, I had a question for the Long Branch League representative. So I was really excited. I came to your unveiling of your big mural. I walked with friends from Ward One and Ward Four over there. So totally walkable from Ward One. So awesome. You had an AmeriCorps, uh, person there? And I was just wondering about the program because I thought it was really cool. And, uh, you know, has, have you had AmeriCorps people there before or is this a new program?
So, yeah, so each year we have at least one, if not two AmeriCorps vistas, um, since I've been there for the last four years. Um, and I think even previously, um, th- this particular AmeriCorps vista has come in a couple of months later than typically. But, um, we're very excited about him because he is very, um, interested in documenting, um, our businesses in a way that has a lot of oral history involved or, um, it's, it's a bit more of the storytelling about the individual business owners. We're very excited about, um, his interests there. But we, we support that program partly because, um, we get a lot of interesting, um, skillsets coming up for, from the, the AmeriCorps program, but also it's very helpful for us to have, um, some extra capacity. Given that, um, our neighborhood's department is quite small, um, and we are very quickly scaling up in, um, many different areas. So we do a lot of this work on Bonifant Street or working in Brookville Road. I work in a resident community in Wheaton. So, I mean, we're just now becoming much bigger than just Long Branch. And so the AmeriCorps program has been really helpful.
Awesome, thanks. And then I had a question for Laura also. Um, I was just wondering, cause like I've talked to some of the, the entrepreneurs that are lower income and trying to get into like art markets and stuff. Do you have any idea what the, uh, market at the bank, like what, like, you know, is it an easy price point for people that are trying to get into Ward One or Ward Three business sort of stuff or?
I don't know the rate that they're charging and I, I think they're filled for the, the next three. Um, but we have some of our smaller markets start at a hundred dollars, uh, to participate. So we've got various price points, street festival being the highest, uh, for us because we get the most people. So there's opportunities, uh, with our, our, um, events as well.
Great. Um, well, I just want to say thank you first and foremost so much to, to the three of you for staying with us in this late hour, but all of the wonderful work that you do. I think one of the things that I, I sometimes not communicated is, um, in terms of, cause the events and, you know, the outreach and the technical assistance. But most importantly is the advocacy that you all do. Not just as it relates to the City of Tacoma Park, but the advocacy that you do to bring in resources to our businesses at the state level, at the county level. Um, all of that really, really, really matters. Um, and I know, you know, our staff, uh, not wanting to speak for, for Ira, who's the lone ranger right now, um, in terms of economic development, but, um, having that extra advocacy. I know, um, working closely with Kaylee over the years as it relates to the Purple Line and getting resources to the businesses in the crossroads area has been really instrumental. So I just really want to thank you all, um, for all of the work that you've been doing. And I guess one question I have for, for all of you is, you know, in addition to coordination with the city staff and working with us more, are there other things that we as a city, um, should try to prioritize? This is a, a new council, um, to really try to help you all in the roles that you serve. What are, you know, what is the one thing that we can really try to do to kind of help further, um, your efforts to help advance the businesses in our, in our community?
Well, we really enjoy this position. And this has been a, a huge adding an economic development manager in my job. I've been in my job for 10 years, so it was pre-economic development manager of the city and, and that's a huge asset. And I think we feel heard, um, we feel supported, um, and I would like you to continue to keep an economic development manager, um, as a priority. From the business level, I think the small grants have been very helpful to our businesses. The last round of grants we made, uh, they were still putting them toward rent. We still have businesses, particularly service businesses that have unpaid rent. So we're not, we're not totally out of the woods and I think that still is very useful, um, for the businesses. Thanks.
I will just echo that Ira is fantastic. Um, and that the position is very helpful in, um, being able to guide some of the businesses on Flower Avenue who are coming to our bus, business association, um, and helping them, uh, navigate some of the opportunities that aren't available to the rest of our businesses. And so we're not necessarily completely, um, knowledgeable about them. And so being able to say, go to Ira, Ira's going to be able to lead you straight, um, I think is very, very helpful. And then just promoting the stuff that we do on the city website, maybe not just promote. I mean, obviously I don't think you could promote individual businesses, but promoting, you know, that there are these different districts and that, you know, you should be going out to those events and you should be, you know, taking the time to, to, um, you know, leave your homes and go and, and bump shoulders with your neighbors in business districts would be really helpful.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry I, uh, waited till the very end, but I was thinking that it might be more appropriate after I heard Mr. Cowler's presentation. But based on the questions I've heard, uh, so far, I think maybe this might be the right time to jump in, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Um, if, first of all, I thank, uh, everyone for the presentations, uh, we received tonight. It's, uh, um, really exciting to see the progress that's been made by having the business associations and the, uh, the great work. And it's fantastic to see that, uh, Long Branch has kind of crawled down Flower Avenue a little bit to get more of the Tacoma Park businesses. And I thank MHP for that. And I just, one question, easy question was, can we get copies? I, I noticed the websites are on the, uh, on our agenda. But can we get copies of the presentations that were made tonight? That would be great. Now, you know, as a, uh, council member for Ward Four, uh, my question's obvious. We've got a lot of businesses in Ward Four that do not have a business association. And it's unacceptable to say that, uh, you know, that's their problem. They got to find a business association. It's, uh, I think we see tonight the fantastic progress that's made in, um, in a neighborhood, uh, when we have a business association. And, and it should be a top priority for our staff to be fostering, uh, a business association in those areas where, uh, we don't have them. We have a lot of, uh, businesses in Ward Four and it, it actually offers a good opportunity for, uh, the city to think about how do we not just address the businesses that have a storefront, but how can we reach out and, and, and support the, uh, the many businesses that, uh, that don't have storefronts? So I would really like to see a plan back on how we can, um, you know, what we can do with our limited resources to, uh, to try to bring the, um, the business owners together and help them. You know, if it was a, if they were, uh, residents in an MHP building, we'd be talking about how do we start a tenant association? But we're talking about how do we get business owners together and help them understand the benefits of, uh, business association and help them to, uh, bring an association together. As a Ward Four representative, I'm certainly willing to work with you and help you in any way I can to make that happen. Including, we could even, uh, talk about putting on some events. We already have some events in Ward Four. But how we can kind of tailor those, uh, to what we've seen in, in, uh, all the three, other three business districts where there are, uh, business associations. That now we can kind of leverage the, some existing events and maybe add some new events to help foster the, um, the organization that, uh, that is needed. I'm not going to talk about Ward Three. I think, you know, they've got, uh, some excellent opportunities over in that area. And, and certainly, uh, from the city's perspective, it's, uh, you know, it's a huge opportunity for us there also. But I, I, I don't think it's right to just say, well, they're our stepchild and we say, we're not going to put the resources into them as we do with the other areas where there are business associations or where we've helped business associations. Ward Four is the safest, has been for 20 years, the safest, uh, ward in the City of Tacoma Park. Uh, MHP has many buildings here in Ward Four. You know, I think there's, uh, I think there's opportunity there that we're not capitalizing on because we say, well, they don't have one. So, you know, we'll have to wait till they get one. I think we've got to be proactive in making it happen. Thank you. Was that a question? I don't think so.
That was, that was a statement, Councilmember Siemens. We'll take it.
Councilmember Siemens, I will just, um, say that, uh, when the Long Branch Business League was, was started, it was because MHP owns buildings in the area and there was a need sought out and we, we were seen as an opportunity to organize. So not saying that we can do it, but I'm saying that, you know, there is a, a model out there for MHP or a different organization if the funding opportunity is there as well.
I, uh, thought that might be the case. Thank you.
All right. And I, I do just want to acknowledge, um, that with my last question, um, Kaylee wasn't able to respond. So I don't know if, if Kaylee is still with us and wanted to highlight anything that we can do to help, um, as a, as a new council, a priority that you have, um, that you would like to make us aware of.
I am here. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I reiterated fairly clearly in my, um, presentation kind of our, our, our wish list that we really need, um, the city's partnership on in the future. Really focusing on, uh, re, reimagining our, our, our space there with the, uh, within the, you know, the, the constrictions that there are on that space. And continuing, I would say, um, continuing being, um, solid partners. A lot of this partnership work is, has already been in place. With, I'll reiterate that having, um, the economic development manager position is crucial. A, a crucial help, um, to the functionality of, of all of this. But continued partnerships with, with Ira, with the planning department and with the police department. Um, and, and continuing those relationships.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so that, we're going to move the meeting along.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm aware it's 10:30 here. I, I do have a brief presentation. I am more than happy to, uh, uh, table that. I think you heard a lot of great information tonight and I'm aware of the time, so, uh, up to you, but.
All right. So, um, yes, we can, we can delay your presentation. If it is something that, um, if you have a slide deck that you can share with council and we can follow up with you offline if we have any questions around the materials that are shared.
Yeah, it's only five minutes, so I, I leave it up to you, but.
Oh, it's only five minutes? Come on, let's knock it out.
I, I suppose technology, uh, technology playing, playing well, so.
All right.
And then will, will this work or do I need to? I'll say someone start a timer for me right now, yeah. All right, so, um, real quickly, just wanted to, you, you heard kind of some great presentations from some of our, uh, our wonderful partners here today. Just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of some of the other economic development work that we're doing, both in health and, and with our other partners. So just real briefly, kind of within the economic development division, we kind of view our work in these four main buckets here. Business support, which is often kind of one-on-one, uh, technical assistance, relationship building, access to capital. Site selection work for both businesses in and looking to locate in the city. Uh, real estate development work, which is both, um, public property and private property, looking to both, um, uh, increase opportunities, increase, uh, tax revenue within the city. Uh, built environment and commercial corridors, public realm work, uh, as well as workforce development. All right, so briefly business support, uh, you heard about, uh, three of our great commercial corridor partners here, uh, today. Uh, I'll also just point out, we also have a, uh, we, we kind of, on a staff level, certainly recognize, uh, as was pointed out here today, that while our brick and mortar business community is pretty strong, that only represents a portion of the businesses. Uh, both existing businesses and emerging businesses that we have in the city, right? We've got a lot of great at-home businesses, uh, that we want to be more intentional about reaching out and maybe filling that gap where you don't have a business organization and be able to do some of that marketing and promotion work, uh, for those businesses in a collective way. Uh, and one of the organizations that's kind of starting to do that work and this year has been doing that work in a great way and that we're, uh, supporting more actively now is the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Crossroads Community Kitchen, uh, which I'm sure you all are aware is on Maple Avenue, is a kitchen incubator. Uh, this is, um, an organization that we are now supporting both, uh, for the kitchen as well as for their farmer's market on Ann Street, the Crossroads Farmer's Market. Uh, they are a commercial kitchen incubator for businesses. They currently have 15, uh, businesses. I believe they've added six new businesses since October, so, uh, growing, uh, growing client list. Uh, and excitingly also in this past year, we're able to, uh, expand up to the second floor of their property, to, uh, offer even additional services for those businesses. And I know Ivy, um, the manager there, uh, is always willing to, to show off the space and would encourage you to, to take a tour and learn a little bit more about what's going on there. And I'm no longer working behind, I'm sorry. So if you wouldn't mind jumping me along here. Uh, there we go. So, uh, I also just wanted to mention, we, we were very lucky to, um, have the opportunity to award two separate small business grants, uh, in the past year. The first one was a one-time small business support grant. This was direct grant assistance, uh, through ARPA for businesses impacted by the pandemic. Uh, this was available to both brick and mortar and non-brick and mortar businesses. Uh, maximum awards of $4,500. Businesses could use these funds for, for any sort of operating support that, that they, uh, had in need. We have to date awarded 77 total awards. Uh, it's $260,000. Uh, and just a few quick facts there that you can read on your screen. I don't, uh, need to read them for you, but, uh, we, we were very excited to get both a, a great geographic diversity as well as kind of business ownership diversity, uh, within that program. And then the other active grant program that we have right now, uh, is our business investment grant, our big, uh, grant, not the, the simplest acronym. But, um, uh, this is a new grant program that we've launched, uh, that is really intended to support, uh, businesses that are either looking to locate within the city or looking to expand within the city. Uh, so these are matching funds, one-to-one matching funds for cap- So these are matching funds, one-to-one matching funds for capital expenditures related to, again, either a business attraction effort or a business expansion effort within the city. It's a maximum award of $10,000. So if a, again, if the capital budget of a project is over $20,000, they'd be available, they'd be eligible for the full $10,000 award there. We have $100,000 in funds. We've currently awarded five since this program was released in the summer, and we continue to receive interest in applications, and we hope that this can kind of be a continuing, revolving program that is another asset, another, along with our great business associations, another kind of arrow in our quiver that we have to offer to businesses looking to locate or stay in the city when we have such a tight real estate, commercial real estate market here. The second piece I mentioned, kind of real estate development is another role of our division here. So I just put on the screen here just a few kind of active real estate projects to point out. There's obviously plenty of other projects going on that are not at a point that we can go to speak publicly to. I think you heard about some of those today, but just point out a few that we're especially proud of. One, I'm sure you kind of saw the news about 112 Lee Avenue. This is a property where a group of tenants were able to come together, take advantage of the city's tenant opportunity purchase law, and create the first limited equity cooperative within the city. So it's a really great model, not just for the city, but for the region. We were able to provide technical assistance within that as well as being the conduit for about $600,000 in state funding for that project. So very exciting. That project settled last month, and they are now owners of their own property, which is very awesome. Let's mention a few other projects. 6530, 6600 New Hampshire Avenue. This is a vacant building along New Hampshire Avenue that I'm sure you all are fairly familiar with. We are working with a new owner of that property, working to, I believe, and if I was correct if I'm wrong, I believe he's acquired 6530, 6600, and is in the process of acquiring 6530, again, with city assistance, and will be taking vacant, currently vacant, underutilized property and reactivating it, which is very exciting. Washington McLoughlin School, this is a large site on Poplar Avenue where we have received some state funds to support the property owner with both stabilization efforts as well as activating, again, a vacant portion of the property there, hopefully to turn it into a childcare center. And then I'll just mention two other big things which are city projects. One is, we do have funding for Tacoma Langley Business Incubator. This is basically being able to identify and support kind of real property for emerging non-brick and mortar business owners to be able to kind of try out their businesses in kind of a safe space where you're not burdened with some of the high rents that we certainly have in all of our commercial corridors at the moment. And then the last thing I'll mention is, we do have an active request for proposals right now for redevelopment of the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. The hope is that we are able to identify a public-private partnership within that RFP that would allow us to both make the best use of the property while also getting a new improved recreational service facilities for the city. So an exciting project. That RFP period will close in mid-January, January 19th, at which point we'll see what proposals we have and present responsive ones to council. All right, real quick, a few other things. I'm sure I'm past my five minutes, so I'll rush through this. Facade, you heard about facade grants. Here's some photos of the facade grants that were mentioned along in the crossroads area. City was able to, along with the state, contribute $100,000 to these facade grants. And we also, as was mentioned, were able to provide a facade grant to Matse Kunda for some of the outdoor improvements there, which we're very excited about. We do have some more funds available that we have some irons in the fire, and we'll see where they go. And then the last thing I'll mention here, I believe last thing, is kind of a lot of our work also is around kind of the built environment, creating these active corridors for folks to take advantage of, to draw folks into the city, and also to create a great environment for city residents. So you heard about some of the great events that we support. There's also some other events that we obviously support, including the Folk Festival every year. And I'll also just mention that we do, as I believe someone mentioned, provide pre-significant grant funding to both of our farmer's markets, so both the Old Town Farmer's Market as well as the Crossroads Farmer's Market on Ann Street, and we're very lucky to have both of those activations, as well as, I don't think I have an image of it here, but obviously the streetery on Laurel Avenue has been a pretty big public right-of-way kind of activation for us. And then just a few other kind of pieces of work the department does in terms of public realm. We obviously manage the outdoor café permits as well as the vendor permit. So you see here an image from a ribbon cutting on the 19th where we will, I believe, she just got her permit from the county this week, so we will have a new Vietnamese food truck coming to the city shortly, owned by a city resident, so very exciting news there. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No, I can't stress enough how much we appreciate all of the hard work that HCD is doing to not only support our businesses during the pandemic, but to help everyone to thrive as we are starting to have some sense of normalcy since aspects of the pandemic has kind of waned, so thank you all so much. All right, we got lights. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank you so much, Mr. Cowler, and also to Director Eubanks for bringing the Leland Apartments into ownership. It's, it was a fantastic result from a, I know a lot of work on the department's getting it done. Lot of, a lot of different balls to keep in the air for a while and to get it to happen. And it's nice to know that we now have that many more owners that are going to be ready for those businesses when they become better advertised. Thank you.
Councilmember Small.
Yes. I just wanted to say to all of the staff and the other people who are working around the issues of economic development, a big heaping thanks. I think the way the budget is constructed, our personal property taxes are really important to the overall picture of things, and it's clear that you guys are committed to doing this work, and your pride of work is abundant in your affect in presentations. I just wanted to say that.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, three specific questions. Ditto on all of that. Thank you very much, all of you. Incubator status, like, there's nothing going on besides that, right? You have a huge number of projects, but I'm curious whether you've had a chance to spend any time making that a little more real.
Certainly. So the first step in the incubator project is that we have engaged P S Solutions, is a local consulting company, to conduct a retail market study.
Oh, great.
For the crossroads area, and specifically asked them to kind of look at not just the retail environment from a business side, but also from a real estate side, right? Do the spaces that we have out there, the physical spaces we have, actually fit with the types of businesses that we want to attract to that area? So that's going to kind of give us some great next steps for that eventual kind of physical real estate portion. And we're also, Kaylee and I, engaging in several conversations with some kind of anchor institutions and businesses who we hope can help lead any eventual incubator.
Great, great. I could use a real quick update on the McLoughlin School, on when the feasibility study is due, because I've forgotten.
Certainly. So we are in the process of engaging a consultant right now. I don't think I could speak too much more than that, but just that some action will be happening shortly.
Great, great. And then the last question had to do with facade grants, and there was a, at one point, a proposal for one at the, of one of the businesses at East West Highway and New Hampshire. Would that be one of the irons in the fire, or is that just?
Correct, yes. So we do have a few businesses or properties that either have expressed interest in facade grants or that we've identified as kind of really high potential.
Right, category.
Properties along New Hampshire, along Maple, a few other properties. And so we've been engaging with those owners. We don't have an active kind of facade grant application at the moment, but we are hoping to have more information on that shortly as kind of those interests flesh out a little bit more.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Honza.
Thank you. I won't reiterate the fabulous presentations, so mine are kind of tougher questions that I was saving off to the end, sorry, at 10:30 at night. The first one is, could you, I'm going to follow up on what I generally said earlier, could you just share briefly, in whatever metrics you would, you think is appropriate, a little bit of a sense of how much each of these business associations is either gaining through the service contracts that was laid out on the agenda for us tonight, as a sense of what they mean to the city and kind of how much we're giving out to them? And I'm going to go ahead and ask all three. And then the second is, have these agreements been executed already this year, all three of them? And then my last question, or sort of suggestion, is, I just, right before I came to this meeting, I was for two hours at the, we were invited, Jesse knows, yesterday we were flagged that the Professional Building, and I'm sorry, this is a curveball, I didn't, I was at this meeting, and I think this is a good moment to bring it up. The Annex Building, the Professional Annex Building on the hospital campus, had not felt like they had gotten integrated into some of the discussions that are happening at the county level as well as the city level, and even by the Washington Adventists, which I found incredible, I had no idea. So they were super keen to gain a knowledge, but I think they were also, I see that there's a real connection here with business associations. In District Four, excuse me, in Ward Six, I saw that we had gone into some of the doctor's offices. That would be a really amazing thing. There were some new business entrepreneurs that were opening in that building, and I suggested that they reach out to your office. But if we could think about, as a collective, you know, how to reach out to that whole building, knowing that health services in the community are really of great value, particularly given that the hospital and the urgent care has gone away, that would be useful. And I hear you're using the term activating vacant spaces, and all these storefronts are full. That is not so. In Ward Six, we have several vacant storefronts still, so if there's some way we can try to activate those spaces, I'd love to have a dialogue about that.
Sure.
Thanks. That was a lot.
Yeah, so let me, yeah, let me handle it in reverse order, I suppose, which is certainly, we have several vacancies in Ward Six. I will say a few of those we are working on, and I think we'll see some movement shortly on, including along the 8000 Flower Block. We're, I'm sorry, I didn't say Ward Five, it's a long night. As far as the Annex Building, certainly, we would love to speak to any business and property owners, and we will make a point to conduct that active outreach here and have those discussions. And then as far as the service contracts, just by way of context, I believe in the previous year, we only had two active service contracts. Those were for OTBA and TLCDA. This past year, we were able to find some budget amount to add both Long Branch, as well as, as I mentioned, the Crossroads Kitchen. Those are at smaller amounts than the two previous contracts, existing contracts, for a variety of reasons. One, they're new contracts. Two, it's, as you pointed out, kind of a smaller subset of businesses. We are hoping to kind of grow those relationships, right? I don't want to speak to kind of any budgetary implications of that, but certainly we recognize the value of these organizations, or the recognize the value of supporting them. So, yeah, I'll pause there and let you touch on any other pieces that I might have missed out on. Oh, I'm sorry, you asked about contracts. They are executed, I actually believe, technically our contract with MHP is in the final process of legal review, but those will be effective as of this past year, I want, so, when executed.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, I just, one of the other questions that Councilmember Honza raised, which she had raised earlier, and I just want to reiterate it, some way, some metric of valuing these contracts, these proposed contracts, again, we've got budget issues. We also have, we want, we need to, we want to show the value to our citizens as well as how we allocate funds, so I want to reinforce that request.
I'd just like to say, the Crossroads reps is set. Like, we bring in a lot of money, because the Crossroads is awesome, that's all.
That's a metric right there.
Great. Thank you all so much. One thing that I do just want to reiterate for my colleagues is, many of the business associations provide annual reports. They are submitted to us, so if you're interested in learning more about metrics and budgets and all of those good things, and the revenue streams of these organizations, definitely encourage you to take a look at those annual reports. Also, I think it's important for everyone to just remember, like, we talked about revenues earlier in this presentation, earlier tonight, and the fact that our entertainment or our hotel tax revenues went up. Well, you do know entertainment is Chuck E. Cheese, right? So making sure that our business districts thrive is critical to our financial solvency as a city. And so whatever we need to do to make sure, I think, that these business organizations and the businesses themselves are set up for success, the more improved our bottom line will be. So definitely want to encourage people to take a look at those annual reports, and also take a look at, when we get to the point where we're talking about the budget, and also take a look in this thing, how some of the breakdowns of where our revenues are coming from in terms of property taxes. You'll see the importance of having a more robust business district is preferred. So with that, I know that we're quite a bit over time. I want to thank everyone again for coming out tonight and staying at this late hour. Really appreciate that. All right, we have one more thing, but I'm hoping it's going to be quick, because everyone's going to want to do it, right? It is a resolution providing the council's winter holiday recess, right?
I move it.
Awesome. Well, I just want to triple-check with the city clerk. We can, can we just all do a?
You can, you can do a voice vote after it's seconded, yes.
Yes.
Yep. Let's do a redo, just so the city clerk will know who moves and who seconds. So we have a resolution providing for the council's holiday recess. Who would like to move it? Councilmember Siemens. Who would like to second? Councilmember Small. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was wanting to offer an amendment, which would be that we meet on January 4th, one week earlier than planned, given the load that I see ahead of us with regard to budget, I thought that that might be possible, but.
Okay, hold on a second, let me check schedule.
One question would be whether staff would be able to do training or orientation materials on the 4th, and the answer is no.
No, the answer would be no. With vacations and everything in preparation, the time that we have outlined is what staff would be amenable to.
So I just want to make sure, so, the outline of the dates was determined based on the holiday schedule, keeping in mind that the first of the year, New Year's Day is on that Monday, people will likely be on leave, which is why we pushed it back to that second week. Keep in mind, we are also scheduling a meeting, hopefully if everyone's available, tentatively for December the 12th. And if it is necessary for us to do additional meetings over the course of December, we could potentially do that, but I think that we can probably hit on the major issues, at least to just acclimate folks during that December 12th meeting. But I want to make sure that I'm following the right process. So we have a amendment to, and I need a second. So, is there any, Councilmember Gibson would like to move forward a amendment of January the 11th to January the 4th, correct?
Correct.
Madam Mayor, if I can, with our rules of order, it dies of a lack of a second, so no one's seconding it, so it dies.
That's what I'm confirming right now. Thank you. All right, so you would like to move it?
Well, I'll take it off, because I understood from city manager that the staff's not available, so it's a moot point.
Good. Thank you. All right, so let's.
I have a question.
Sure.
I think that, like, Randy's raising valid points, like, he's concerned about being prepared. Is it? prepared. Is it possible to discuss later a meeting during December, like, earlier?
Yes. So the resolution.
We don't have to discuss it right now. Like, let's figure it out later when it's not this late at night. Possibility of meeting in December at some other point?
Yep. So it's, so just as a point of order, because we're all learning, it's helpful to kind of get these ahead of time, but we have this last whereas. If circumstances require the city council to meet at other times during recess, council will provide as much as is practical for such meetings. So it allows, this last whereas allows us the flexibility to modify the schedule if we need to.
Question, I guess, if we had another meeting, the question is, what kinds of preparation would we need from staff to make that meeting useful? Now, I'm thinking that maybe, well, I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, I raise it, is there a possibility that their resource materials could be provided without staff being here? But if the question is, would it, again, be a moot point to have a meeting without the kind of preparation that the city manager was referring to?
So because of our Open Meetings Act, unless it is an administrative or closed session, either way, we would need staff. So we would need to either have them with making the meeting publicly available for folks, preparing our agenda, preparing any materials, or even if it's a closed session, we would still need to have staff available. So I think any meeting that we schedule as a council would require staff support.
So it's a moot.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just make a point? There might be, there might be a difference between a formal meeting, agenda, work packages, cover sheets, and a discussion of materials that are provided for purposes of orientation. That's the only thing I could imagine that you might be able to pull together in December. But even that, I see as a stretch. I was just saying that there's a difference between a full-blown meeting and a meeting for a specific training purpose.
And keep in mind as well that if you have any specific questions regarding process, procedures, policy documents, staff are still available, the city manager is available to answer those types of questions. What we're talking about is bringing the entire council together, which requires additional steps. So I want to make sure that we can, I see the city clerk?
That was from the floor.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Small?
I'd like to call the question.
Which means we'd have to vote on.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do. All right. So now, we're going to do this one last time. We have a second, we have a first, we have a move, we have a second. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right. Awesome. Thank you all so much. I think we can now go on holiday break until next week. Just keep in mind, we are meeting with our District 20 delegation next week, and I think, yes.
I will add one thing. The presentations from tonight will be posted on the council agenda page, so all the presentations you heard tonight will be posted tomorrow.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right.
And preparation for the 12th meeting, I had raised a concern that I might not be able to be here, so is that something that I can take field or take virtually, or is that?
Yes. Yep, we can make it a hybrid. All right, so I think we have everything. This meeting is adjourned.